Zoning Board Meeting, Monday, December 10th, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this meeting room is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Present.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troply, might square it in the professionals, please.
The record should reflect that Mr. Kuntlick, Mr. Mallon, Ms. Zinkavich, and Mr. Howard have had this sworn to the evening.
Thank you, sir. Approval amendments, regular meeting, October 22nd, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion after minutes. Be accepted.
Motion by Ms. Moretti.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Special meeting, October 29th, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mertens.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Regular meeting, November 5th, 2018. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Moretti, and Nansen. Have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Uh... Do we have... We have some cases.
Resolution.
No, I...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do.
Do you want to address the cases that are going to be carried?
Yes. Nicholas and Lisa Zaza are going to be carried to January 28th, 2019 with no further notice. They sent me an email on that.
What cases? Okay, that's...
BA 1814, and on the agenda, there's a typo. It should be expiration date, January 31st, 2019.
Okay. Okay, case number BA 18-14, Nicholas and Lisa Z...
Zaza.
Zaza. This case will... There will be no testimony tonight for this application. It will be carried to January 28th, 2019 with no further notice if anyone's in the audience for that case.
And 634 Field, I talked to the attorney for that case. I do not have their proofs, so I don't know how the attorney wants to handle that. But they will not be heard tonight either. We could call them, and they agreed to get carried to February the 11th, 2019. If he has to renotice, he will.
Mr. Troply?
Yeah, 'cause...
Renotice.
It's gonna be renotice? Okay. Anyone in the audience for case number BA 18-07, 634 Field LLC? This... There will be no testimony on this application. It will be carried to February 11th, 2019 with notice.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, we have a resolution, case number BA 18-28, Michael and Kathleen Van de Goot, bulk variance to construct a single-family dwelling with septic system. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell. We have a roll call.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, cases before the board tonight. We're gonna move the agenda around a little bit here. We're gonna... We've got a nonconformity that we're gonna put ahead of L&amp;L. Case number BA 1824, Carl Endeura Giganbach, certificate of nonconformity, application of Carl K. Endeura Giganbach as applicant and owner seeking a certificate of nonconformity confirming that a multifamily, two-family rental residence is valid in pre-existing nonconforming use on premises known as Block 19 and Lot 1901, two-station place, expiration date, February 8th, 2019. Welcome, sir.
Hello.
You want to stand and be sworn?
Swear the testimony there will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, self-deprecating.
Yes.
You may have a seat. State your name for the record, please.
Carl Kevin Giganbach.
Thank you. Witnesses.
Okay, sir. What can we do for you?
Um, my family property that my grandparents bought back in 1951, they renovated it as a two-family residence. They lived upstairs until approximately 1966 and rented down the lower property when they moved next door to our other property, and then they rented out both units. Somewhere along the way, it's not being recognized as a two-family property anymore, so I'm trying to get it recognized for what it's been for 65 years.
Okay. Mr. Howard?
Yep. So ultimately, this came to us, I believe, as a rental certificate application, landlord registration. And when we have, um... We do have throughout the town a couple multifamily houses, two or three family. Our ordinance right now does not permit that in many zones, almost all of them exclusively are single-family dwellings. So we usually look for a history on the property. Oftentimes, we have rental certificates and landlord registrations that document multifamily housing from decades ago, and we usually generally accept that. In this case, we were void of any records on this property. We had no housing documents, no land use permits, no construction documents talking about multiple meters, even though they're present on the house, or anything alluding on the construction side even that there was an apartment or, you know, multifamily housing. So when we do that, in fear of approving and nonconforming use, we usually deny the rental certificate and send them here so that they can have the opportunity to present the proof needed to be legally pre-existing nonconforming. I've done research into the ordinance, and this has been residential agriculturally zoned since 1957, which was our first ordinance. It was agricultural zoned in 1957, switched to R2 zoning, and it is still that today.
It's still R2? It's not agriculture?
Well, agricultural zoning was... That zone... That used to be a zone. We don't have an agricultural zone anymore. We have the ARE zone.
Right.
But it is R2, which is a 20,000-square-foot minimum lot size residential. These are... In this area, they are smaller lots. They're not the one, two, three-acre lots.
Right.
So it is R2-zoned. The R2 is single-family dwelling specific, and like I said, it's been a single-family dwelling zone since 1957.
Okay.
So...
Now, has the township been aware of both houses being used all this time or no?
As a multifamily dwelling, I can't see any record that we have.
Okay.
So like I said, from the construction documents, housing certificates, we haven't found any. Doesn't mean it wasn't there.
Right.
It doesn't mean that the use wasn't present. We don't... It's a big town. We don't know everything. It looked like this property had come back in front of the boards a couple times for some subdivisions. We looked through those resolutions, and it wasn't mentioned then. It's possible that there would have been some discussion at that point if it had come out, but it didn't. Everything was listed as a framed dwelling, not even single-family, not multifamily, just... There was no mention of the use of the structures. So that didn't provide any insight and...
And that was a... That came before the board?
Yes.
What year was that? Do you know?
2005 and again in 2007. There were subdivision applications to the planning board.
Oh, planning board?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Not zoning board?
Right. So they were looked upon as... You know, there was no record of the multifamily use, so they would have been in front of the zoning board. So I think it was probably, you know, something that just wasn't discussed at the time.
Was the property subdivided?
It was. It was mostly lot lines being moved to better accommodate the structures that are there. There was nonconformities because lot lines were running through houses and sheds, and ultimately, it was just a correction of those lot lines.
Okay.
Originally...
Okay.
Originally, when my grandparents had it, it had three separate lots, 50 by 150. There was a house on either end lot and an empty middle lot.
Right.
Somewhere along the way, the township, for convenience, combined all three lots into one lot with two structures on it, which was completely nonconforming. So then I had to... I wanted to try and sell, so I had to split the lots to split the two houses into two separate. It cost me almost $25,000 to do that.
Right. No, it's understa... I'm just trying to get the history.
That's I understand. I'm just giving you another little piece of it.
That way, I understand. So these houses are subdivided separately now?
They are now.
Okay.
They have been, like I said, they were originally three, combined into one, and now they're two separate.
Okay. Now, do you have any permits back or no?
Since 1950, I... No. And then I've done open public records requests. There's nothing via the county. I've gone through the tax. Mr. Howard's looked into it. There really are no records on these properties.
No COs, no anything, huh?
From 1951, no. I think there was a big flood in the township that wiped out...
I mean, there's stories of such.
Yeah.
I don't know specifically.
Yeah. Whatever documents may have been submitted to the township are 65 years ago and have been destroyed, one way or the other.
Okay. Mr. Mallon?
I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Giganbach. In your application stuff, you stated you had numerous meters.
Yes.
So it's for the two living units that...
I have three meters, upstairs tenant, downstairs tenant, and landlord.
Why would you have a landlord?
Because I have a basement common area, and I have common lighting on parts of the house that the tenants are not responsible for.
Are there any other separate utilities that...
It's well and septic, so those are common.
Right.
There are separate hot water heaters, separate plumbing systems, separate entrances.
How is it heated?
It has a common boiler that is controlled by a thermostat in the first unit, an oil burner.
And then they... Do each of the tenant pitch in and split half, or how is that?
Actually, that's my responsibility. I cover... I cover the oil payment, and they pay me in... Well, I haven't had a tenant for years because it hasn't been rented for years. So yes, but originally, when my parents had tenants, they would just combine that into the rental cost.
To best... The best of your knowledge, it's never been abandoned. It's always been basically the same.
Always been the same, as far as I can remember.
I know... Your description of everything said when you were a youngster, uh...
Yeah, I grew up there. My grandparents lived there. I was raised there. It's been passed down from my grandparents to my parents to me. It's never been abandoned. It's never been vacated.
So it's been... So it's had continuous ownership?
Yes.
Basically, or family-oriented?
Yes.
So there's nothing... I have no further questions, I think.
Helen?
Yeah, so the important things to establish in this case are that the existing use predated the ordinance, and then that the exist... The use continued on-site, unabandoned throughout that time period up until the present date. So, you know, if the applicants provided those proofs, then the board can choose to act favorably.
Okay. Matt, I'm gonna come back to you. What's your synopsis here?
So I've reviewed the proofs. I think the board should give just the weight that they feel necessary with the letters given. They are written statements of testimony. I ultimately leave that decision up to the board based on what Ms. Zinkavich has just said about the abandonment. We have nothing on record that indicates it has ever been abandoned. The testimony speaks to before 1957, so I think the board should just give that weight that they feel it should have.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board? Seeing that, Mr. Troply, we need to open for public, right?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open to public for any questions or comments regarding this case?
I'll make a motion to open to the public.
Motion by Mr. Armata?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Anyone here would like to come forward, make a comment, or ask a question of the applicant here? Come forward and do so. Seeing that, can I have a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Armata, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, just one thing.
Yes.
Just keep in mind, the certificate of nonconformity basically gives Mr. Giganbach the right to continue the use as a two-family. We haven't looked at anything with setback variances or any type of coverage, any type of variances. He's only here to establish, and usually it's done when somebody tries to sell it or, as he said, he might have a rental unit and needs a CO, and we see that it doesn't. But just sort of what understands, it basically gives him the right to continue operating the two-family.
Correct. Do you all understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're saying the zoning has been single-family dwelling since 1967 or 57?
57. Our first ordinance was 1957. That will always be the time I come back to in our residential zones.
And you said the place is built in 1960?
51.
It was... It was originally built in 1931. My grandparents purchased it at auction in 1950 and renovated it in 51.
Oh, 51?
Yes.
I thought you said 61.
No, 51.
Okay.
Do you have anything electric bill, anything two electric bills that...
I have multiple electric bills for multiple meters, yes. But I'm not going back to the 1950s.
Obviously, not 1950.
Yes. Yes, I do have multiple.
You have anything else? I mean, right now, you're just telling... You look like an eye in the sky. Don't get me wrong.
I have... My letters, I have sworn letters from my parent... My dad, who was raised there. I have a letter from a tenant from 1954 who was raised there. Short of that, I can't find any documentation. When my parents gave it to me in the 80s, they destroyed their records at some point over time before I had... Before I realized this was even an issue. This only became an issue a few years back when I was asked to register as the rental property. I hadn't had it rented at that point in time because I had problems with some tenants and had to evict, so I was just turned off by being a rental property.
Right.
So right now, my daughter is living in the one apartment, but I'm definitely trying to sell it, and it being a two-family rental provides it a little more value than a single-family.
Mr. Troply? Thank you. Forgive my horssness tonight. In addressing Mr. Posh's question, and it was commented on earlier by the professionals, that before you make your decision, you can give weight to the letters. Obviously, the letters are not dispositive, but what would be dispositive of the applicant's case here would be the live testimony he's given. Who's the best witness in this case except the gentleman before you? In other words, getting letters from tenants and things of that nature, again, I would recommend that you accord that less weight than you would live testimony here tonight. He's a family member. He has a history with the household, with his grandparents. It's always held out as a two-family. The township does not have any records to rebut this, so I think that you have to give great weight to the testimony that you've heard here and lesser weight to the letters that may be in the file. I mean, you could still consider them, but I think the best evidence that's dispositive of his case, as it's been said here, is that you have a continuous, unbroken use of this property as a two-family residence since before the ordinance was adopted. So those are the most important facts that I see in this case, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion. Based on the testimony of the applicant and the testimony on all our professionals and the fact that we have no records because we had a flood that I'm aware of, I believe the applicant in this particular case should get the benefit of doubt, and my motion is to approve your application.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes, and I hope I didn't offend this gentleman.
No, no, no. It's fine.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
I concur with Mr. O'Donnell's motion based on testimony and based on the professionals' testimony. I agree. So my vote, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. We'll do it the first meeting in January. I don't think it's that big of a rush.
Mr. Troply, at this time, are we gonna give the Conleys a little time? Go ahead and start L&amp;L and then see how fast that's gonna move, or...
Can I come up for a sidebar here?
He's not gonna be here.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Yeah. Yeah, we did all three. Oh, yeah. I think I'm all right.
Okay. Okay, next case on the agenda. Application for the board, case number B-A-1806, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc. To use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Application, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., as applicant, One Greenway LLC and Two Greenway LLC, as owners, seeking a use variance in preliminary and final major site plan approval to develop the property as a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility with improvements consisting of the removal of portion of the existing concrete manufacturing facility, rehabilitating the existing storage building, construction of a quality control building and a wait station, installation of office trailer near the existing office, and removal and replacement of approximately 13 acres of impervious coverage with landscaping in total of 250 trees, and installation of other associated improvements on premises known as Block 177, Lot 62.01, formerly Lot 62 and 64, 89 Yellowbrook Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard on May 7, 2018, when it was carried to June 25, 2018, with no further notices. After some discussion on jurisdiction, the recycling aspect of the application, the board took jurisdiction on June 25, 2018, and then the application was carried to June 9, 2018, with new notice. After some additional testimony, June 9, this application was carried to August 27, 2018, with no further notice. After the application, applicant put testimony, additional testimony on the record October 22, after some testimony, it was carried to October 29 with no further notice. After some additional testimony, October 29, the application was carried to December 3, 2018, for a special meeting with no further notice. After some testimony, December 3, 2018, it was carried to December 10 with no further notice. Expiration date, December 31, 2018. Eligible voters: Armada, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Moretti, Nansen...
And Mr. Orozco and Mr. Hughes have both certified, say they are eligible to vote.
Okay. Also, Mr. Orozco and Mr. Hughes are eligible. Mr. Butler?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm sure you can hear me. I believe the last time we had left off, we agreed to come to this meeting tonight to allow the public to ask questions of my witnesses who have already been cross-examined.
Yes, sir.
I am waiting on one witness, but I do have the applicant. I have Mr. Croson, who provided testimony regarding the noise, and also Mr. Kennedy, who provided the testimony regarding the engineering testimony. They're all here presently and can be questioned by the public.
Okay. I would like, as soon as your other witness gets... How I would like to set this up is where we have all the witnesses up forward. Whenever each person comes up, they can ask their questions, and I would like for you to direct who answers that question.
Okay. Not a problem.
Because that way, we're not doing one witness, you know, one of your witnesses at a time, because then that means everybody's gonna come up multiple times to ask each witness a different question.
That's understood. Not a... No issue.
Okay. And at this time, as far as directions to the public, this is for questions only. No comments will be allowed at this time. Come forward if you have a question of the witness, of the operation, to the witnesses. They will, to the best of their ability, they will answer your questions. There will be no comments. I will not allow comments at this time. The other thing is, watch and listen to the questions asked. Please do not do redundant questions. If we do that, we're gonna be here all night. And, you know, let's try to move this forward. You know, everybody has questions. Everybody might have a different question, so I please ask. I'm gonna let Mr. Tropoli also.
What about comments?
No comment. I said, no comment.
I'm about ready to...
When are you going to be allowed to say comments?
You will be allowed to ask, or do your comments. We'll do a five-minute per person at the end of the hearings. That's after all witnesses are, you know, cross-examined, and all testimony is on the record. Then you will be allowed to have your comments.
Just for the record, that would be the very, very first time, at the end, that you'd be able, that you would ask for comments from the public. I just wanna make sure I didn't miss something, that there were comments in the beginning.
There have never been any comments.
Is that correct?
It's always at the end.
And is that common?
Yes, sir.
Normal counsel to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I personally find that very hard to believe and understand, that you won't take comments from the fact. I find it hard to believe that we're even...
Sir... Well, sir, you're outlying right now.
We need to proceed, but thank you. Mr. Chair, before the gentleman was speaking, I want to assure all the members of the public that it is not... Nothing is unusual about the procedure. This is equivalent to closing arguments. Every member of the public will have an opportunity to speak on their own behalf and give comments at the conclusion of a case. That is the procedure prescribed under the municipal land use law, period. It's not my procedure, it's not their procedure. It is the procedure. So please bear with us, this has been a very contentious application on many points. Tonight, Mr. Butler will be presenting his witnesses for cross-examination. One thing I do want to point out that the chair may have mentioned, but I didn't hear it, is that when members of the public come up, I need to swear each and every one in, please give your name and address. It's for the record, and that'll be pretty much it. So with that, I'm gonna ask the chair, if you want Mr. Butler to proceed, he should bring his witnesses up, identify them, and we could start the questions.
Yes. No problem.
Mr. Tropoli?
Lance?
Mr. Tropoli, I have a question for you. Does the questions for the people that are gonna testify just pertain to Howell Township residents?
Yes.
If they don't live in Howell...
You have to identify where they're from.
I know, but if they don't live in Howell, we can take testimony or questions?
Public hearing. If they need to, they can... Yes, they have... We have...
Okay. Just wanna make it clear.
Can somebody consider this table?
No.
Thank you.
Jimmy, you want to answer?
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Butler, all your witnesses...
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All your witnesses are previously sworn. Am I correct?
Yes, all these, all the witnesses up here have been previously sworn at prior meetings.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
She would like to ask a question.
Ma'am, can you just hold on just a second?
Can you just hold on a couple minutes?
Please.
The chairman will tell you when to come up.
Okay. Okay. All your witnesses are previously sworn. Would you please introduce your witnesses and their profession, or their responsibility?
So first, first to my left, I have Brooke Croson. He has provided our noise testimony. He is our noise expert. Next is Lance Reddy Alley. He is the representative for the applicant, L&amp;L Paving. And at the other table, we have Jim Kennedy of Kennedy Engineering. He is the engineer for the project.
Okay. And we have another witness as soon as they're available.
Yes, there is another witness. It's Gary Dean. He provided the traffic testimony. He is supposed to be here tonight. I have not received any word that he wasn't coming, so...
Okay.
Okay. I don't, I'm assuming, do you want just people from the public to come up? I'm not sure how you want to handle it.
One at a time?
Okay.
We'll let the lady come on?
Ma'am?
Come to the podium here, please?
Mr. Chairman, do we have to open to the public?
Oh, Mr. Tropoli, we need to open public hearing here. Can I have a motion to open to public?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Hughes?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Good catch, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you.
Okay, ma'am?
I haven't been sworn.
Get...
I don't know if you heard what I said. We have to swear of your...
That's fine.
That's okay. Swear to, or tell to two, is that what you got?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And can you state your name, and place your name on the record, please?
Paulette Brado.
Spell your last name.
B-R-A-D-O-W, 29 Jefferson Street, Howell, New Jersey, 07731.
And before she begins, I just wanted to let everyone know that Mr. Gary Dean has come.
Thank you.
So he's made it, so if there's any traffic, traffic questions, I now have the full panel of experts who provided testimony and have been cross-examined.
Okay. Now, Mr. Butler, it's up to you to, you know, give the question to the proper professional.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
You can ask your question, ma'am.
Oh. I would like to know if there is a shortage of asphalt or concrete in Howell Township that another facility has to be enclosed in Howell Township to meet that shortage.
Mr. Butler? I will let Mr. Reddy Alley answer that question to the best of his ability.
There's only, in Howell Township, there's one supplier of bituminous concrete, and his facility is in Howell. It's across the street from the property that we own, and he doesn't, or they don't run it regularly. It's not a everyday operation over there, and unfortunately for us, they no longer sell to us.
Thank you.
They couldn't hear you.
They couldn't hear you.
What part didn't you hear? The whole thing, or just the end?
Just the end.
The one supplier in this town of Howell, he no longer, they no longer sell to us?
Ms... Lance, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
In Monmouth County, just Monmouth County, approximately how many tons were sold last year?
I would guess between 700,000 tons to 800,000 tons a year.
Okay. And in your business model, how much tonnage do you use a year? Just...
Our company, Mr. Chairman, we purchase between 50,000 and 60,000 tons per year.
Okay. And how much of the 700,000, 800,000, how much of that share are you looking to try to gain?
Well...
Not dollars and cents, but just tonnage-wise.
When we put this together, my brother and myself, we felt that there was a market for approximately 200,000 tons of sales.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm finished.
Okay. Were you able to hear that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next person, come forward. Question, please. Come forward.
Just let them come up.
The next person can line up over here if they want. I don't wanna get a full line going, but, you know, the next person could come here, and then when that person comes forward, then another person can go in. Okay, sir?
I do.
State your name and your address, please.
Donald A. Knoll, N-O-L-L, Senior, 120 Brown Road, Howell, New Jersey, 07731.
Thank you, sir.
My first comment would be...
No comment, please.
No, not my comment, my question.
Okay, thank you.
Rather, I'm sorry. My comment will definitely be later. My first question is, like, you said there was a demand for, or they won't sell to you or whatever. There is other concrete places. You have Earl, they don't sell to you either?
I'm gonna defer that to Lance.
Earl, that's where we purchase our material right now.
Okay. 'Cause I know there is that plant right across there. There's one in Tintin Falls. You have the one on Hope Chapel Road, you know. I can't see why this town would need another plant when there's one right across the street. And my next question would be, how much property is actually gonna be stripped here to build this plant? How many acres of trees are gonna, a number of trees? One tree? A hundred trees? A thousand trees?
Okay.
Okay, Donald.
Let's, I'll let Mr. Kennedy, why don't you answer that one?
No, it's okay. It's okay. The site is 35 acres in total.
Okay.
And most of it right now is actually disturbed from the existing concrete plant. We're actually removing 13 acres of that impervious and planting. If you look at the rendering on the board, the lighter green areas and darker green areas are areas of the site we're actually revegetating. We're providing deciduous and evergreen plantings, 250 trees. We're burm-ing the front along Yellowbrook to limit the visual impact of the plant, and we're restoring 13 acres of the site back to a pervious, green space, so...
What do you mean by green space? Grass?
It's actually a meadow mix, and also along the perimeters, it's planting, it's trees.
Well, what kinda trees?
So we actually have...
Right now, I know that area very well. You're talking trees that are over 100 years old, coming down, you know? Nobody thinks about our environment no more. You know?
Mr. Kennedy...
I have a simple question, how many trees?
Okay, hang on. Mr. Kennedy, how many trees are coming down with this site?
I have the number, just need my glasses. There's 1.719 acres of tree property that's being cleared. The way the ordinance works is that there's a required replacement value per acre of disturbed woodland, and we're actually, the 60, the required revegetation is $60,181, and we're providing a revegetation of $75,000. That's how your ordinance reads. It's based on an acre, not a per-tree basis.
So you're telling me you could take down 300, 100-year-old trees and replace them with little scrubs coming up that'll take over 100 years to regrow? Is that what you're trying to tell me? Or you're gonna put up trees that are very mature, gonna regrow? 'Cause we gotta think about our environment.
So the planting plan, which is on sheet 11 of 17 of the plan, shows 2 1/2 to 3-inch caliper red maple, 2 1/2 to 3 1/2 inch, 3 to 3 1/2 inch caliper London plain, 2 1/2 to 3-inch caliper scarlet oak, and they all range from 12 to 14 feet in height. It also shows smaller deciduous trees such as catsura and Downey shadow blow, as well as evergreen trees that'll be planted 7 to 8 feet in height on burms that are approximately 5 to 6 feet in height. So when we talk about planting mature trees, we have to balance between planting a tree that's large enough that it can actually grow in space, and planting a too big of a tree that can't take the transplant. So these, in my opinion, are a fair balance of replanting what we're disturbing. And just remember, we're only disturbing 1.7 acres of the site, of a 35-acre site that is currently wooded. 13 acres of the site is being restored to pervious surface where, right now, it's pavement and broken stone. So we're restoring most of the site, and that's kind of unheard of in an industrial site plan such as this. We typically don't reduce impervious surface and eliminate an impervious surface or a lot coverage variance when it comes to a plant like this. And in this case, we are. The existing impervious is 84, 85%, and we're reducing it to a conforming amount of, I can look it up, but around 44%. We're actually eliminating the impervious surface variance that currently exists on the site.
So you're... And what about all the animals that, you know, the deer that happen to live in those woods? Where are you gonna redo with those? Let them get hit by cars, your trucks that are going in and out?
Sir, question.
That was a question. What happens to the animals and everything that are in there?
No comment. You're making comments now.
That's, okay, I'm sorry for the comment.
Just a direct question.
Could you, like, do away with that comment? That was a question. What happens to the animals that are in there? There's an overpopulation of them now here. That wasn't a comment, that... I'll wait for my comments.
Just a question. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Abraham Chasnoch, 20 West Pacchio Lane.
What, West Pacchio?
W-E-A-C-C-I-R.
Spell your last name.
C-H-A-S-N-O-F-F.
Thank you.
What town?
I live in, I live in Howell.
Okay.
I'm in the, in the Equestria area.
Excuse me, Mr. Chasnoch, could you just raise the mic up so you're speaking directly into it?
Yeah, there you go.
Because we have to pick you up. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
I have questions for several of the witnesses.
That's fine. Ask your questions, Mr. Butler, or direct it.
Mr. Butler, would you please...
Be sure to speak to the mic, I'm sorry.
You need to speak to the mic, sir.
Mr. Butler, would you please ask Mr. Reddy Alley if he would be available to answer some questions?
Ask your question, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Reddy Alley, am I pronouncing it right?
You are not.
I'm not. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Reddy Alley.
Nope. Reddy Alley.
Reddy Alley, I'm sorry, I got an L in there.
You can call me Lance, if you want. It's much easier.
You can call me Abe. You first purchased this property in 2016, is that correct? You and your brother?
Yes.
And what name did you purchase it?
I believe it was Titten Industrial Park, LLC 2.
Okay. And when you, when you purchased it, you, when you purchased it, had you already made your estimate of what your annual production would be?
Exactly, probably not.
How did you come to the, to the calculation of 200,000 tons a year?
It was just a conversation my brother and myself had about what we purchase a year, and what we think the ability of selling material on top of that was in the area, and that's kinda how we just came up with the number.
And how did you, how did you arrive at the conclusion to purchase this prop, this plan from Aztec?
Can you rephrase the question? I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
How did you decide to buy this plant from Aztec?
Why did we choose Aztec?
Yes.
Because we felt personally it was the best facility on the market.
Did you, did you look at other facilities as well?
No.
Did you, did you look at, did you shop, or did you find a catalog, or find a, something that would handle your capacity of 200,000?
No.
Did you find, did you learn what the capacity of this plant was before you purchased it?
Yes.
And how did you, how did you do that?
Just so you know, we haven't purchased it yet.
Well, okay, but this is the one that you're planning to purchase.
Yes. So what was the question?
How did you come to that conclusion that this would be the plant to use?
We felt it was the right size, production-wise, and price-wise for us.
So what was the production that this plant can produce?
Production-wise, I would have to defer to Catherine from Aztec, who is the actual manufacturer of the facility. I believe she testified on all that.
Well, how did you, if you didn't know that this was what you, that this would handle, what your output was gonna be, why did you choose this particular plant?
Why did we choose this particular plant? Again, because we felt it was the right size and price for us.
How did you know what the size was?
I'm not sure I understand the question, the size was.
Well, you said that you're, you're, you needed a capacity of at least 200,000 tons a year, growing out to that level, correct?
Yes.
How did you know that this plant would handle that?
When we met with Aztec.
And when was that?
I don't recall exactly.
Well, you don't need exactly, but where in the process was it?
Well, I think he answered that question, that he doesn't remember where and when he met with Aztec.
What was it before you purchased the property?
No.
So you purchased the property, and you didn't yet know what your plan was, and when did you get to meet with Aztec?
I don't recall the exact date.
I don't need the date. Was it, you had already decided that you were going to go into the asphalt-producing business, correct?
Yes.
How did you come in contact with Aztec?
One of our employees went to a trade show, and we met them there.
Were there other producers there as well? Producers of the factory?
Yes.
But you only talked to Aztec?
Yes.
And you say that you have 18 to 20... And you say that you have 18 to 20 trucks, is that correct? That are used in the asphalt-laying business?
You're asking currently?
Yes.
I, I believe that's what I testified to.
And how, what is the capacity of each of those trucks?
They range from one ton to 23 tons.
How many of them are 23 tons?
I don't know exactly.
How many roughly?
Six.
Okay. And you learned, did you yet learn what the capacity of the plant is? Do you, do you now know what the capacity of the plant is?
Yes.
And what is it?
I believe Catherine from Aztec identified it as a 400-ton-per-hour facility.
How many hours do you anticipate running the plant a day?
Abe, I'll be honest with you, that is gonna be based on market demand. I, I I know I'm permitted to work a certain amount of hours, but do I think it's gonna run 10-plus hours a day? I, I don't believe that to be true.
So it's four, it's 4,000, 4,000 tons an hour?
No, sir.
What did you say?
400 tons.
400 tons an hour.
And Lance, there are assumptions made on that 400 tons per hour, are there not?
That is, 400 tons an hour would be 100% virgin material at 5% of moisture or less.
And is, is that the, the formula that's used in roadways?
No.
What is the formula that's used in roadways?
I believe roadways, they permit up to 30% of rap in the mix.
So would that be more or less per hour?
It slows it down.
So it'd be less an hour?
Yes.
And you're gonna have, originally, you're gonna have three silos, but after that, you're gonna have, but you're planning to expand to up to six silos, is that right?
We're going to get the approvals for six silos.
And can you load three trucks at a time for three silos?
No. You cannot.
And why is that?
The silos are lined up one behind, one behind each other. So only one truck can go underneath that silo at that time to get loaded.
And so, and so they have to queue to get to the three?
They have to pull under the silo.
And one, there one behind each other?
Well, one has to be on the scale at a time.
Okay.
So one truck will pull on the scale, get underneath the silo of that particular material or product it's getting, get loaded with the tonnage that they're asking for, and then pull off the scale, then the next truck would get on.
So there's one scale for the entire operation at that site?
There's one scale for those three silos, yes.
Now, you talked about, we talked about noise, and you talked about mitigation of noise at night by using strobe lights. Do your trucks have strobe lights now?
They do not.
Do you know how strobe lights are installed?
Personally, I do not.
Do you know the general, the general concept of it?
I do not.
Are, are we talking backup strobes? That's what you're talking?
Thank you.
We, we have backup beepers now.
You have beepers, but you can't use beepers at night, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So how do they, how do you disconnect the beeper and, and connect the strobe light?
I think he already answered. He doesn't know how, how that's done.
Is the strobe light, is the strobe light, are, are the beepers disconnected?
And once again, Abe, he's already answered that. He does not know how that, that is done, but there's been a representation to the board that the strobe lights will be used at night.
I understand that, Mr. Butler, but you also will be used, well, having other people come onto the site besides your own truck, is that right?
Yes.
How can you guarantee that they will be able to use strobe lights and not their beepers?
We're gonna tell them.
So it can, so it can be, can, can the beepers be disconnected?
Abe, I'm not 100% sure, and I don't, I can't be clearer than that, okay? But what I can tell you is, is that if we have to have strobes working at night, every one of those trucks will have a strobe on it. And if they don't have a strobe on it and their backup beeper goes on, we're gonna tell them, "You can get off the property, don't come back until your strobe light works." That's what I can tell you.
So, so you, you have no control over whether they come on to the site with a strobe light? That's, that's basically what you just said, correct?
No. What, what I said was, if somebody comes on our property, knowing that they're supposed to have a strobe light on, and they have a backup beeper on, it will be policed in-house immediately and taken care of.
So that you can't, you don't control whether they have a strobe light when they come on, but once, once you've heard a beeper, you tell them to get off the property, is that right?
That's already been
He's already answered that question, sorry.
At the present time, there's, you have permission to use trucks to clean off what was left from the previous owner, is that right?
And, and we, we, the testimony that's provided is simply for the, for the application that's in front of the board, which is the use going forward, not the present use of the property.
That's right.
Correct.
That's right. Can I have an answer to the question?
No, sir.
No.
Can't. It's not part of this application.
No, I understand that, it's not part of the
It's not part of this application.
I believe there was testimony, Mr. Chairman, that the traffic, the traffic assessment counted the trucks that were on the property now. And I want to know how many of those trucks there are on the property now that are working in that way.
Mr. Butler, I I, I don't know how to rephrase that because that, that's existing use of the property, that it's not part of this application.
Correct, and, and
But that was, it was testified to by your traffic that those, the trucks were accounted, am I correct?
Correct. So those trucks are counted, and if Mr., if Mr., Abe, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you Abe, but that's okay, because I don't want to mispronounce your last name. If Abe would like to ask a question of, of Mr. Dean about his traffic count, he certainly can.
Yes, sir. Well, I will. But I wanted, you, so you don't know, or you're not prepared to answer that question?
What was the question?
Question was, how many trucks are you operating now? But you can't answer that. Now, do those? How are you going to, you, you said that you are going to instruct all of the truck, all of the trucks that come onto your site not to use Cranberry Road, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're, how are you going to police that?
We're proposing to put signage on our property as well as telling them you're not to use Cranberry Road.
And how are you going to police that?
We're physically gonna go out there, and if we see any of the trucks working for us, or material from us, and we see them using Cranberry Road, we will call them immediately. Abe, just the same way we're doing it right now. We're not using Cranberry Road, as you know.
You anticipate using, having 90 trucks a day, is that correct?
I thought, I think the testimony of Mr. Dean can, can clarify. I believe it was 60 trucks.
I believe that Mr. Dean said 60 trucks, but Mr. Lance said, testified to 90, is that correct? That was including all of the operations that you're trying to
I, I believe that had the recycling, the Class B
And I, I think
And that has nothing to do with this application.
Right, and, and maybe I'll, maybe I'll defer to, to, you said you're gonna ask questions of Mr. Dean?
Yes.
All right, so maybe I'll defer, can we defer to Mr. Dean to ask, answer the questions regarding the traffic?
Okay. But you do anticipate truck traffic from recycling, is that correct? Assuming you get the permit from the county?
Sir, that, that's not part of this application.
The traffic is, Your Honor.
Sir. It's not part of this application. I, I can't deal with that. We, we've been told, we don't have any jurisdiction.
I understand that.
That's the county. If the county issues that permit, the county is gonna take in consideration the traffic. It's gonna be at a county level, not, not, not our level. May I put it this way, it's above our pay grade. That's what we've been told.
Now, what are the reasons that you're not using Cranberry, that you intend to keep traffic off Cranberry Road? Why?
I mean, for us, it's a direct route to 33 and a direct route to 524. That's simple for us.
And just, just to clarify, what, what is a direct route?
I'm sorry. Coming out of this facility going north and going south is the direct route to 524 and to Route 33.
And what direction does Cranberry Road take?
I, I believe that goes east.
Doesn't Cranberry Road parallel Route 33?
Yes.
And isn't it, if it parallels Route 33, have you ever taken Cranberry Road in your car?
Yes.
Have you ever taken Cranberry Road in your car to Shafto Road?
I don't think Cranberry Road goes to Shafto.
No, it doesn't. It goes to, it goes to Asbury, and then take, you can take a quick right to get to McGill. Correct?
Yes.
You can take, and get to McGill, you can go to Wyckoff and make a left. And that would take you over to, over Route 34 to Shafto?
Yes.
And isn't that also a direct route to Shafto and to Route 33?
I'm gonna, gonna be honest with you, Abe. If you come out of our property and make a left and drive one mile, you're on Route 33.
If you, once you make the turn, correct?
Excuse me?
Once you make the turn.
Onto Route 33.
Right.
I'm on Route 33. The way you just, the path you just drew for me seems like a lot of driving to get to Route 33, when one of our vehicles comes out, makes a left, goes north a mile and makes a right or a left on Route 33. That's about as simple and cleanest way to get to Route 33, in my opinion, in a truck.
A peak hour?
Think you want to put the peak hour as our traffic guy?
Yep.
So this, this is basically, your, your policy is not to allow traffic on Cranberry Road?
Yes.
That is your policy today?
Yes.
That's been answered, sir.
Is it possible that you could change your mind?
Maybe I could answer that, Mr. Chasnoch.
And, and
Mr. Chasnoch.
Yes.
If this board rules favorably, and there, there's a lot of testimony that they will not use Cranberry Road, so that will most likely be a condition of the approval as the land use officer and in charge of code enforcement. If we have a complaint, somebody's using Cranberry Road, we're gonna park ourselves out there, we're gonna, if we see it, we issue a violation, if we see it again, we issue a summons. So there is an enforceable action on using Cranberry Road if the condition of this approval is to not use Cranberry Road.
And there, there has been a lot, there has been a fair amount of testimony that's been provided by every, almost every single one of our witnesses, I believe, except for the out-of-state witness, that Cranberry Road is not going to be used for trucks from this property.
Technically, no, sir.
He's just, he's just raised a point that I, I think he can answer. Mr. Howard?
Mr. Troply, I have to let you interrupt. Is that fine?
I don't have an objection, but I mean, honestly
It should be just for the applicants, witnesses tonight.
That's why I'm asking this.
Perhaps that's better for a comment. And again, I'm only trying to facilitate the proceeding so that other people from the public might be able to talk tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have no other questions of Mr.
Okay.
I do have other questions.
Okay. Let's try to move them forward.
Try.
All right. Abe, who are you talking, who are you questioning now?
I just have a simple question of Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kennedy, you studied the topography of the plant, of the lot when you drew your Thank you. You, you testified that you studied the topography when you were preparing to make your plan, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And was there anything about the physical layout of the property that would preclude its being developed as an office building?
No.
Is there anything that would preclude it's being used as a medical center?
If, if you know the answer to the question, Mr. Kennedy.
I don't know the answer to a medical center.
Okay, what about for developing as a warehouse and distribution site?
Once again, Mr. Kennedy, if you studied that, if you studied the question that Abe is asking, feel free to answer the question. I think what you, what you testified, or the answer to Abe's question was that, did you look at the topography when you were preparing your site plan, not whether you looked at it in comparison with whether another use could be on that property?
From what you first saw, did you, did you have a, an opinion as to whether or not it could only be used for an asphalt cement facility?
Is your question from an engineering perspective, could it only be used for, as an asphalt plant? No, I'm sure there's other uses that would work here.
What about for a microbrewery?
I mean, he's already asked that question, so maybe if Abe, if you could move on.
It can be used for other uses.
Right.
There, there could be other uses. He testified to that.
The answer's on the record, it can be used for other
Okay.
things, so, and we need to move on from that respectfully.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Crowson.
Okay. Brooke?
Be sure to speak into the mic. Thank you.
Thank you. You prepared the environmental report for this facility as well, is that correct?
Yes, I participated in it.
Okay. And when you did that, did you know, you, you stated that there were no steep slopes on the property?
I'm not sure whether I don't recall exactly. I don't think that there are steep slopes on the property.
I think that was your original testimony, was it not?
That was a long time ago, many meetings ago.
It was. July. Why was that, why would that be important?
It was just a factor to discuss in the EIR. There is a whole list of topics that are to be covered, and topography and steep slopes was one of them.
And that would be, that might be something that might preclude some uses, is that right?
If you know the answer to that question.
It could make it more difficult to develop
Right.
for certain uses.
But that would not be the case for this site. Because there were none.
It's a relatively flat site.
Thank you. Now Now, you stated, when you're doing, when you were dealing with the ambient noise, you stated that the ambient noise on Yellowbrook Road was relatively high, is that correct?
Yes.
And you also, in response to Mr. Butler's question, you said that LNL would not add to the ambient levels at night, at the levels that they would be operating, is that correct?
Yes, the operations on the property of the plant would not add to the noise levels at night.
And how do you know what the levels at night would be?
I, based upon information provided by Aztec, I calculated what would be coming from the plant at various times, and it's not operating at night. I have measured trucks in the past, and I also measured the LNL trucks at a defined distance, both idling and operating, so I was able to model the truck operations at various locations on the site.
And did you have to consider the number of trucks that would be operating at night?
Yes.
How many trucks did you estimate?
I assumed six trucks operating at one time on the site.
And how did you get, how did you get to the number of six?
It was a matter of spacing them out as far as coming in the entrance and cycling across the property to the, to the plant to be filled, and then exiting out, looping around the rear, and just spacing them out on the property.
Do you know whether it's legal to disconnect the beepers on the reverse for the trucks?
I have no specific knowledge about that.
So you don't know whether they can be disconnected legally?
I just said I personally have no knowledge of that.
In your test, in your experience, have you ever encountered a truck that had disconnected beeper?
Typically, on my other projects, I recommend to the clients that they have adjustable sound beepers, so that when it's quiet at night, the beeper itself is 28 decibels quieter than it is when it is during the day. But the decision had already been made on this one, that they were gonna go with the strobe lights.
So the beepers, the sound level of the beepers can be adjusted?
There are beepers that are adjustable, based upon ambient, automatically adjustable, based upon the ambient sound.
Are there, are there any limits, as far as you are aware, about the use of beepers in Howell Township?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I have some questions for Mr. Dean.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Dean, in your testimony, or rather, in your assessment that was dated April 23rd, you stated that using a conservative estimate, the Batuminis concrete plant will service approximately 60 total trucks per day to meet customer demands. This estimate is based upon material projections by the applicant. Could you tell me what those projections were?
In the morning peak hour, which was from 7:30 to 8:30, that would result in 12 trucks.
Excuse me, I don't think that's, I don't think that answers my question. My question is, how, how many trucks is it estimated that there would be per day?
60.
Total.
That's what's in the report, correct.
And that would be both, both the applicant's trucks and customer trucks?
Correct.
And the trucks would be, if you know, the trucks would be about 24 tons?
Not all of them, no. As Mr. Reddell indicated, they could vary in size, depending on the customer's order.
Did he tell you how much asphalt would be produced in a given day?
No.
Not talking about year, I'm talking about per day.
I understand.
Did he tell you about the capacity of the trucks at that time?
No.
Did he tell you what his hours of operation would be?
No.
You stated in your report that as time and efficiency are key elements to the efficient transport of finished Batuminis concrete, drivers will plan the quickest routes to their destinations. Is that correct?
I believe you read that directly from the report, yes.
As such, during peak hours, it is probable that the intersection with Route 33 and Yellowbrook Road would be avoided by trucks and more, and more often during, off-peak hours, mid-day hours, when the intersection delays are much longer. Is that right?
That statement was predicated on Yellowbrook Road and Route 33 remaining as it is today. As you may have been present or read in the transcripts, there's been discussion about contributing toward a traffic signal at Yellowbrook Road and Route 33, and if that were implemented, that would alleviate the traffic concerns that presently occur.
Did you do any evaluations of the effect of traffic from LNL on Cranbury Road?
No, because as you've heard, those trucks will be prohibited from accessing Cranbury Road.
And in a perfect world, that will work, is that right?
That's the premise on which I must operate.
Do you know what the speed limit is on Cranbury Road?
Not, it's not in my report, I'm sure our staff picked it up, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Have you heard the number 45?
I don't know the answer. I've not heard, I've heard that number-
In this context?
No, I have not.
Do you know, have you ever traveled on Cranbury Road?
No.
I have no other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Abe. At this time, we're gonna take a 10-minute break. 10-minute break, please.
The board will now recess. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay, Mr. Butler, we need to clear up a case real quick.
What was that?
We need to take care of a little business here for-
Yeah, sure. Do you need us to move, or?
No, no, you're fine.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Can you go right up to the podium?
Come to the center.
Hi.
Just put your name and who you represent.
Nicholas Dakotas, I'm the engineer representing Sean Connolly and Christina Connolly.
Okay. Yes, sir.
We'd like to, based on the turnout for this, postpone until, I believe Eileen said, February 25th?
25th.
We need an extension of time.
We need an extension of time, if the applicant will grant one, possibly through the end of March.
Sure.
You can just put it on the record.
We'd like to grant an extension of time.
To Mar, to the end of March?
End of March.
Thank you.
March 31st.
No further notice.
No further notice. Okay. Did you, I know you had a conversation with Mr. Mallon, there was, there were some things-
I did.
Y'all are gonna take care of that?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, case number BA 1804, Sean and Christine Connolly. It's gonna be carried to-
February 25th, 2019.
February 25th, 2019, with no further notice. Okay. Okay, Mr. Butler, I just wanna remind the public, please, you know, we had two witnesses and it took up over an hour. If you have the same questions, please don't be redundant on the questions. If you got new questions, that's what we need to address, please. Okay? Next witness, please.
Why don't they sit down?
Mr. Chair, there's more seats, I think the public needs to sit down.
Yeah, please.
There's about five or six seats, so there's no need for anyone to stand.
If there's seats, please find one, please. Thank you. Mr. Troply.
Good evening. I certainly do. Yes, my name is Joanne Monroe, M-O-N-R-O-E, address 27 East Sagamore Drive, mailing address Farmingdale, municipal address Howell Township.
Thank you.
And I have one single question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the weight load of Yellowbrook Road sufficient to withstand the 200,000 tons of asphalt that LNL expects to transport across it annually?
Okay, I'm going to defer to Mr. Kennedy if he knows the answer to that question.
So the way you ask the questions, you ask it on an annual basis, what we look at is axle loads in the, in the development of roadway capacity, and I know of no limitation on Yellowbrook Road. How long, if Mr. Dean is aware of any weight limit or axle limitations?
There are none to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Thank you for waiting for that question, ma'am.
Swear to tell the truth to the God.
I do.
State your name for the record and your address.
My name is Michael Nannini, N as in Nancy, A-N-N-I-N-I. I live on 30 West Chaucer in Howell, Sutecaster.
Thank you.
And you can call me Mike from now on. Mr. Butler, my first question is directed at Lance.
Okay.
Lance, you mentioned that you currently buy your material-
And Mike, if you could just-
You mentioned that you currently buy your material from Earl down in Jackson?
Yes.
Is that the only purchase, place you purchase your material from now?
It is not. I'm sorry, it is not.
What other manufacturers in this area do you purchase from?
Trap rock.
Okay. Do you ever purchase material from Hess's Plant in Lacey?
Yes.
So Hess's Plant and the plant in Jackson are 15, 18 miles from here?
Mike, I don't know exactly the distance.
Okay, fair enough. When you start to produce material to sell, how large of an area do you think you'll be able to sell to? Like, for example, if there's a paving job on the Garden State Parkway from, let's say, 114 to 125, do you think that's a job that you would be interested in selling to?
It's not that I wouldn't wanna sell to them, Mike, it's would they wanna travel to me to buy from us?
Well, do you think it's in the range, you're a paver?
They would have another option, price-wise, so what you would do is, who's gonna give them the best price?
Agreed. Do you, are you familiar with the Mount Hope Rock, Tilcon-owned plant in Mount Hope, New Jersey, up by Wharton?
I'm aware of Tilcon's facilities, but exactly where they all are, I do not.
Okay. Are you familiar with North Jersey at all? Rockaway, Route 80?
Yes.
Okay. If I was to tell you that it's approximately 45 miles from the Mount Hope plant to Kiesby, which is the foot of the Driscoll Bridge.
Is there, is there a question here? Okay.
And they sell material that far, so you will have people coming to you to buy material from you, from at least 30 or 40 miles away. Yes or no?
And I think that the question has, I mean, it's been answered, that Mr., that it's based on the market, it's if someone wants to come to the, to the plant, I mean, Mr. Reddell can't, you know, say how far away someone's gonna come to get, to get material from him. It's, and I think you agreed, it's price, location, there's a whole bunch of, I guess, variables that go into anyone making a decision to buy anything, including that Beep at Batuminis Concrete.
Lance, is it fair to say that when a job goes out to bid, let's say this job from 114 to 125, four or five contractors want to bid it, and they'll come to you with your plant to get a price from you, because they have to do that equation that you talked about?
Okay.
So they, you think that could happen?
If, if you know how the bidding process goes for another company.
Ask me the question again, Mike, please.
There's a job from 114 to 125, let's say, it's 116 to 125, Art Center to the Bridge, it's a 200,000-ton job. They come to you, you're gonna give them a price to sell the material.
Okay.
That's a yes?
You're painting a scenario, so I'm a-
It's a scenario that's gonna happen?
There's no testimony that this scenario is gonna happen or not, you're asking him a hypothetical question.
Well, we had hypothetical, hypothetical situations presented by your professionals.
Yeah.
You did, your professionals gave us a hypothetical situation about a factory that they could build instead of the asphalt plant.
And I don't believe that was a hypothetical situation, that was a study based upon what's permitted in the zone.
Okay, well, I can tell you that when they put out paving jobs on a major road like the Parkway, they're 150, 200,000 tons, and they're gonna go to Stavola to get a price, they're gonna go to Lance to get a price, and if they're a little further south, they're gonna go to Hess to get a price, or they're gonna go to Earl to get a price. Some of those suppliers pave, some of them don't. Lance doesn't pave, he doesn't do those type of jobs now, is that correct?
Correct.
But someday you may.
I don't know what the future is going to predict for me personally, Mike, I don't.
I understand that, but isn't that something that, I mean, I'm familiar with your company's operation. As a matter of fact, 18 years ago, you did my daughter's driveway in Howell, you did a great job, still haven't had a crack at it.
Thank you, Mike.
So, I mean, I would, I would suspect that with your expertise, and you're gonna build the plant, that you're gonna start to do larger and larger jobs.
We're building a plant to sell material.
Exactly. And let's talk about that. There's been a lot of discussion about trucks, and how many trucks are gonna run in and out of the plant on a typical day.
Please base it on a question.
Okay. Am I correct that your traffic engineer said that- Am I correct that your traffic engineer said that there'll be sixty trucks per day on a typical day?
I would, I would defer that to Mr. Dean.
I, I didn't say sixty trucks a day, that was the applicant.
Okay. Lance, I believe you said the larger your truck can hold, twenty-two to twenty-three tons?
Yes.
So, with that in mind, if we had a event, whether day or night, where they were gonna supply, you were gonna supply twenty-five hundred tons of material, how many truckloads of material would that be?
In one day?
In one day, it'd be a hundred and twelve.
What did you say, Mike, how many loads?
Hundred and twelve. I'll save you from doing the math.
Thank you.
So that's a twen- that's a hundred and twelve loads of material going out. That means there has to be a hundred and twelve trucks coming in empty. So during that event, that would be a total of two hundred and twenty-four trucks?
And once again, this is a purely hypothetical question that you're asking Mr. Reddy Alley about.
It is hypothetical. An asphalt plant that's gonna cost almost four million dollars to build had better produce days where they sell two to two, twenty-five hundred tons of material.
And you're making, you're making the statement as, as a, as-
Let's, let's ask questions, please.
We're gonna back to the questions and the testimony that's been provided by Mr. Reddy Alley. Um, and there's been no, no question or no testimony provided about two hundred and whatever, whatever amount, whatever amount that you said.
Even, even if you did a thousand tons, if you did a thousand tons, just one job, one day, a thousand tons, is forty-four loads.
If, if, okay, but can we get, do we get to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Let's strictly state the questions, please. You, you're getting into comments and questions here.
Lance, talk about the loading that we're talking about, the amount of trips, all right? That doesn't include the milling, correct? Because if someone's paving, ninety percent of the time, they're milling.
If you can answer that question.
Ask, ask the question again, Mike?
If, is it accurate to say that in most cases, if they're putting down a thousand tons of pavement in a day, that they're probably also milling that area that day, and that milling is coming to your plant?
Not necessarily.
So you're telling me that they're gonna be milling and sending that milling someplace else, not to your plant so you can recycle it?
That's not what I said.
I'm confused, what did you say?
You asked me, I think your statement was, your hypothetical was, if the company was putting down a thousand tons, they were bringing in a, a thousand tons of millings?
Well, they're bringing in the millings that represents that area for that thousand tons.
And, and, and I said no to that, because you could be doing a thousand tons worth of base in one day, and there's no millings coming in.
You're absolutely correct. But when you're doing a resurfacing job, do you do base?
There could be base repair, Mike.
Okay, but you wouldn't do it when you were doing a thousand tons of paving, would you?
Could be.
Okay. Let's talk about the independent truckers. There's been a little bit of discussion about the backup alarms.
It's already been testified to, sir. It's already been questioned and testified to and answered.
Well, I, I have a follow-up question, or follow-up questions allowed. Because there's been, there's been a contradictory statement made between last week and this week.
Okay.
Last week, one of, one of Lance's professionals indicated that it wouldn't, and I believe the attorney for Howell indicated that enforcement of the prohibition of the trucks on Cranberry would be very difficult to do.
That's, sir, that was, you, you, you missed what our code enforcement just stated.
I heard what he said today.
That, that's what he said.
So, so one of the independent truckers from LNL goes down Cranberry Road, and in front of him is a Henkels and McCoy who has a plant on Cranberry Road tandem. The Howell police or some code enforcement officer is gonna write the LNL independent trucker a ticket and let-
That, that's not, that's not what was testified to. And I, I really, it, it, it was testified to, I, I'm gonna put it to this, it's a code enforcement issue, not a Howell police issue.
Okay, so how is it gonna be enforced?
Sir?
How is it gonna be enforced?
It was already, it, it, that was already put on the record, tonight, that was put on the record.
So it's not gonna be enforced by the Howell police?
That, that, that's not what he said, I mean, and, and, and once again, just to, to reemphasize what Mr. Chairman said, is that, that that has been put on the record and we're trying to move forward with questions.
Okay, but does anyone in the room know how it's gonna be enforced?
It was testified to.
Okay, give me a hint, I mean, how is it gonna be enforced?
Sir, I'm not gonna re-answer the question, it was already testified and it was answered.
Lance, when you first started your application many, many months ago before this board, I believe you testified that you were going to work seven to five and a few nights for emergency work.
Yes.
How did we get from that to, we're gonna make material to ten o'clock at night, and then we're gonna have the silos loaded, and then we can work all night without making the material because it's in the silos? How do we get from a couple of nights to fill in the silos with eighteen hundred tons of material, which would lead me to believe that you're gonna sell eighteen hundred tons of material at night?
And that wasn't what the testimony was. I don't believe there's any testimony that the, the silos would be filled to eighteen hundred, uh, eighteen hundred tons so it could sit there at night. I think what the testimony was is that the, the silos are there in case there, because there's different types of mixes, and the silos are there, it allows them, the, the plant to be shut off and no manufacturing to happen after ten o'clock.
Which is the reason why, when they had a night project, they would load the silos with eighteen hundred tons, and then they would empty the silos into the trucks and lay the eighteen hundred tons down.
That was not, I don't believe that was the testimony that was provided.
It doesn't have to be testified to, it's like if you turn the light switch, the light's gonna walk.
It does, it does have to be testified to, that's what we're here for, we're here to provide testimony to flush out, to flush out, no, no, to flush out the application, we're here to provide this testimony. You're here to, you're asking questions regarding a testimony that's already been provided.
Well, the testimony started with, we're gonna work a couple of nights a week, to we have silos with eighteen hundred, can hold eighteen hundred tons, and we now can put down eighteen hundred tons a night.
That's not what, that's not what the testimony was, sir.
Have eighteen hundred-
Sir, once again, that's not the testimony that was provided.
That wasn't the testimony. Uh, Mr. Butler just stated that.
Lance, what experience does LNL have in operating a hot mixed asphalt plant?
None.
Do you currently have a person qualified to be a plant manager in your employ?
No.
Does anyone at LNL have any training as far as OSHA requirements and certifications to operate a hot mixed asphalt plant?
No.
Do you intend to get some of your people certified?
Yes.
Have you ever given any consideration to leasing the plant out to a third party?
I'm not sure what the relevant relevancy of this question is.
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with that.
Well, I can, I can give you some relevancy if you want.
It's not revel- not for this board. Let me explain something, the zoning board, we can't look at any financial, we, we can't base any financial gain, profits, anything before this board. We, we don't even look at that. We don't look at tax revenues, we don't, you know, it, it's not part of this board.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that.
Okay.
But your board is being tasked with the challenge to permit a hot mixed asphalt plant.
I understand, but what does that have to do with him renting out or to a third party? No, it doesn't. I, I, I'm ruling on that. That does not- Sir, sir.
It would be one of the largest asphalt plants in Jersey.
And you're out of order. We will not go to what he's gonna do with the plant to a third party. It, it, it has no business here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Peter Lines, eleven Tall Oaks Court, Farmingdale, New Jersey.
Eleven, eleven?
Eleven Tall Oaks Court, Farmingdale. Lines, L-I-N-E-S. My, my first question is relative to the site plan and where the location of the silos are gonna be located, and why is that particular position chosen? From this depiction, I can't really tell.
Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy?
The, the silos are indicated about, um, six hundred and change from Yellowbrook Road. They're positioned so that they were best buffered, uh, from Yellowbrook Road, provided adequate queuing on-site, and it placed the asphalt plant, um, in an area that was, uh, further away from Yellowbrook. So the silos are there. It doesn't require a truck to back up or excessive maneuvering. It allows, uh, trucks to, to load, uh, go through a turn, and leave the site. That's why the silos were placed where they were.
What's the nearest residential house to the silos?
I believe the, the noise consultant has all that data with regard to sensitive receptors.
Mr. Kennedy, from, from the, from the Yellowbrook Road, it's, the silos are approximately how, how far back?
My, my question is the closest residence.
Well, to answer the attorney's question, six hundred and forty feet from the intersection of Cranberry and Yellowbrook Road. With regard to the nearest residence, um, you've heard testimony that the applicant controls, um, or leases out the closest residence, and that is about eight hundred feet away, um, from the, the silos.
Now, how, how far away is Tall Oaks Court?
I don't know.
Who knows? Who did the engineering study?
Uh, we, do you, where is-
Tall Oaks Court, Tall Oaks Court is the closest residential area to this silo. And there's homes there. There's about eleven, there's eleven homes on that street. I would, I would submit that if they did a good analysis, they would know that. I think my property is two hundred yards, my house is two hundred yards from the plant.
Is how many? What was, what was that?
My house is approximately two hundred yards from where these silos sit.
Is that, you're saying six hundred feet?
Correct. So if you just simply look on Google Maps, you see it.
Are you on Cranberry, sir?
Full Oaks Court.
And tell me, give me a cross street to Tall Oaks Court.
Merrick. Lot one seventy-seven, lot one oh six point zero six.
Oh, okay, so, uh, we have a, a two thousand foot radius map on the, the front sheet of our site plan. Tall Oaks Court is actually indicated in the, uh, thank you. It's actually indicated on the, 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 the map, and I'll just scale it.
I don't, what was that, I'm sorry?
I know, it's up on the screen.
Yeah, the, the-
Well, thank you. So it's about seventeen to two thousand feet away, so maybe a little less than half a mile?
So on this, I know you can't, you can't hear me on this map, where exactly are those silos? Because here's the property line. Here's my house, here's the property line, that's about two hundred yards.
Well, that, just using the, the scale of the tax map, it, it's not two hundred yards. It's, it's almost nine hundred, eight hundred feet. This is one inch equals six hundred, I'm using a sixty scale, and I'm coming out to about eight hundred feet. That's just to the property line. Now to the silo, the silo is, is located further on-site, I'm measuring to the wetlands in the corner.
Jim, can you just, uh, repeat that, your answer wasn't picked up, I'm sorry.
Sure, uh, so from the, the closest residential property on Tall Oaks Court, just to the property line of LNL itself, not to the silos, not to any disturbance, not to any buil- building, it appears to, to scale to about eight hundred feet. Now if we go to the silos, um, that's going to probably be about double that distance, about seventeen, sixteen, maybe even close to two thousand feet, depending on where on Tall Oaks you are.
Okay, I can't, I can't argue with the map, I see it. I have one more question?
Yes, sir.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions. Uh, were, were there any noise studies done from Tall Oaks Court? So I, I've been in touch with Sandy, I think Sandy's here tonight, and he's been over, and it's not an official study, he's been over, and if you ask him, he'll tell you the noise is very loud over there, it echoes through there, it reverberates.
Okay, and your, your question was, was, was there a study on Tall?
Was there an official study done from Tall Oaks Court? I heard a lot about Cranberry.
And, no, there was not.
Are there any plans to?
There was, there was, that wasn't a requirement of the board, there was, there, at the moment, no.
So the board would have to make that requirement? Mr. Chairman, is that how the process works?
Yes, sir.
So if I, how would I-
It would be up to our professionals to make that request.
Okay, so you have, you have a letter from me about, from about a month ago, I don't know if anybody actually read it?
Mr. Trumpley.
If there was noise studies done?
The board really can't take unsolicited letters like that, um, and that's really why-
Okay, so I'm here now making a request that there be a noise study done from Tall Oaks Court?
And there was a, there was a noise study done from the, the property to the nearest residential property, and the results of those, that noise study is that the app, the activity that'll be on the property will meet the state and Howell Township code. That property is closer than the properties on Tall, Tall Oak Road, which is what Mr. Kennedy just, uh, figured out. So, the, hence the, the result of that would be the, any noise that's coming off of the property towards Tall Oak Road, since it's further away from the properties that were studied, would be also meet the state and Howell Township codes.
Okay, and that study does not take into account sudden noises, correct?
Can you?
It takes, it takes in a constant noise, like a white noise almost. Fifty-five DVA, I think I heard in the last testimony.
I would defer to Mr. Cross, Crosson to, to answer that question regarding his study.
Okay.
What was your question?
Does the study take into account sudden noises, tailgate slamming?
The, uh, a tailgate slam is considered an impact noise, which is, uh, has a different standard than, than does the continuous noise. And I might say, continuous, you may think it sounds like it's, um, your so-called white noise, but continuous noise includes, uh, noise peaks that are as short as two or three seconds are considered continuous noise, um, in the state and, and Howell noise code. And those were the noises that we analyzed in the report as being compliant with the daytime and the nighttime standard.
And, and how long does a tailgate noise last?
Less than a second.
Right. Right.
I got a question for you. Have you taken in consideration the other businesses that are around there? Anchor Block, you know, there's other construction companies that are closer to you.
Well, we're not allowed to comment? I can make a lot of comments.
No, no, I'm asking you a question.
Yes, oh, absolutely. I've lived there 20 years, and heard this stuff for 20 years, I don't want any more.
Okay.
Right?
Fair enough.
So one more question, environmental studies. We have Yellowbrook, which is right directly behind the plant. Any environmental studies on the groundwater, Tall Oaks Court? Every resident has a well?
Brooke?
There is an ongoing cleanup on the property that is being conducted by the prior owners and is being reviewed by NJDEP, and it will be completed as per the DEP requirements.
What about ongoing analysis of the groundwater? Contamination?
That is part of what those studies entail.
I mean, we're gonna be dealing with asphalt, right? Which is a petroleum-based product. I would assume some will spill onto the ground at some point.
And that's more of a question, I think, for Catherine, who was up here from Aztec.
I think that was already testified.
And that was already testified. Someone did answer that question, and I don't wanna paraphrase.
We can't reopen that testimony. It's already been public, public has already cross-examined her and questioned her.
Okay. No more questions.
Thank you, sir. Come forth, sir.
I do. My name's Peter McLaughlin, 43, Yellowbrook Road, in Howell. All right, I'll let you guys figure out who to direct these questions to. First, we heard testimony that there would be, I guess, information was provided by the company, that there would be 60 trucks estimated in and out every day. We just heard testimony was 400 tons an hour, 10 hours, that's 4,000 tons. You've got the trucks, you say they're 20-yard trucks, that's 200 trucks a day. So my question is, why would you be purchasing or proposing putting in a plant that can put in far more than four times the amount of asphalt you plan to produce?
And I think that question's already been asked and answered.
It has been asked and answered. Yes, it has.
I believe not.
Abe did ask this question.
No, he did not put it like that. I did not ask him, why is he...
You're reframing a question that has been...
I'm asking him, why is he asking? No, Abe did not ask him directly. Why are you purchasing a plant that produces more asphalt than you say you're gonna put out?
And once again, that question has been asked and answered.
All right, just humor me, what was the answer?
Once again, it's been asked and answered.
It's been answered.
Okay, I'm gonna assume he said, it has happened.
You are out of order.
Tell me what the answer was, it wasn't answered.
It was answered. We're rehashing questions. Have you been here through all the testimony?
The whole thing, he did not answer, that question was not phrased like that, and he did not provide an answer to that question. I will swear to it.
It has been answered.
He did not provide testimony or an answer on why he's purchasing a larger plant than he produces the asphalt he plans to put out.
Okay. It has been answered. That's the last time I'm gonna ask? I'm gonna ask you to sit down. Ask another question.
All right, so how... Are the trucks gonna, are you proposing that the trucks aren't gonna run at night? Or they are running at night?
I'll let you answer that question again. It's been asked and answered.
Yes, the trucks will be working at night.
Okay. I just, a simple, simple one. All right, I have a question, and I know you're gonna get a little huffy with me, because you're gonna say that it's been answered, but it's a different question, and it is to code enforcement, and it pertains to, how is code enforcement gonna enforce this at night and on holidays?
Sir.
That hasn't been answered.
Sir, you can't ask my professionals that.
He provided testimony and answer, and so I'm gonna ask, what is it about?
No, it's not gonna happen. These are the witnesses that you need to be asking questions to.
So how do you propose that you can enforce this law on Cranberry Road with... Well, that's already been answered, you're just gonna shoot me down, so I'm done. But I'm gonna state again for the record, my question was not answered.
Yes, I do. Anthony J. Iorio, I-O-R-I-O, and 14 Asbury Ave, in Farmingdale. I don't know who to direct the questions actually to, but why are you not allowed to be sold material from Stavola currently?
You can't go into that. We can't go into that, sir.
Okay. Have you ever been in violation?
I'm gonna stop you right there. If you're gonna try, if you're gonna ask a question about the current use of the property, that's not what's before this board right now.
Well, I'm just wondering if it's been in violation as you're currently running? Has it ever been an violation?
Once again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say...
I agree.
You have to stick to the testimony of the witnesses that have testified.
I'm just trying to bring up valid points, that why, I mean, why are we...
You can bring them up in your commentary if you wish, perhaps.
Well, you know, why are we inviting this type of people into our neighborhood?
That's not what this is here for.
That's a question.
What?
Why are we inviting these type of clients and these type of businesses into our neighborhoods?
That's up to the applicant. They put in an application...
They're not able to be sold any material from Stavola.
We're not getting...
Sir. Questions to the witnesses, please.
I'm trying to get these questions out. And again, another one would be, what would prevent you from, you know, just racking up violation after violation?
Oh, come on, come on.
And, no, because, listen, I've been around this business for...
Enough! You're out of order!
I've been around this business for 35 years. I've been...
You're out of order!
I've run plants. What is gonna...
You're out of order. If you have a question, you ask a question, no comment.
About the testimony, about the testimony that's been provided.
You're commenting to ask your question. Ask a direct question, please.
All right, I'm gonna ask you the direct questions. What are they gonna keep a non-union company to rack its violations?
Sir, a nerve, sir! Totally out of order.
Enough, sir. Listen, there have to be questions that are based on the testimony. You may have your own personal opinion, I get that. Those are opinions. Ask questions or sit down respectfully.
Okay, I'll sit down, but I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I need to remind the public, a lot of this testimony was put on the record. If you weren't here, or if you haven't heard the testimony, you know, a lot of this was questions that was asked and answered. Last week, we went round and round over the tonnages, the production and everything, with the attorney crossing these witnesses. That's not part of this. That's not the testimony. Those questions have been answered whenever you're dealing with the tonnages, the production and all. We've wasted a whole meeting on that. So if you've got questions dealing with tonnages, dealing with production, as far as the capacity of the plant, those are all questions that's been asked and answered. So, you know, let's move forward with questions that need to be asked to the witnesses that satisfy you. The thing about dealing with the unions, dealing with other things, that's not part of this application at all. So I direct you, as far as the application before the board, that's where your questions need to lie. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thomas J. Bane, 11 Yellowbrook Road, and I believe my question would be to Lance.
Yes, sir.
Spell your last name for me, sir.
Thomas.
No last name.
B-A-E-H-N-Y. Do you realize...
Mr. Bane, just if you could talk into the microphone.
Do you realize Yellowbrook Road is a township road?
Yes.
Do you realize it's a residential area on Yellowbrook Road?
Yes.
Do you realize it's the same distance going up Yellowbrook Road and taking a right to the Quick Check as it is going down Cranberry Road and taking a left on Colsonak Road to the Quick Check?
I do not.
Well, it is. Why can't your trucks going east use that route? It would certainly help the residents on Yellowbrook Road.
We just felt that a straight route and a straight drive, Tom?
In other words, in other words, to hell with the people on Yellowbrook Road.
That's not what he said.
Sir, Tom!
No, not to hell, to the people, Tom. It's a direct route for our trucks to go, straight one direction and turn left and right.
Well, check it, it's the same distance going down that way if you're going east. If you're going west, it's different. Go up Yellowbrook and take a left.
So you're saying from our entrance?
Yep.
Down Cranberry Road?
Take a left on Colsonak Road and turn to the right.
That's the exact same distance?
One tenth off, maybe.
I don't know that to be fact, but I can't imagine that.
Write it out. Okay. Okay.
Okay, I will.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
Welcome, sir.
I will.
Peter Armenia, 78, East Bosworth Boulevard, Equestra, Farmingdale.
Could you just spell your last name, sir? Thank you.
I'm not gonna ask about Cranberry Road, I just, I think we beat that up.
Yes, sir.
Do you have dedicated staff to ensure compliance to your rules? And I mean hands-on, call them traffic managers? People who're gonna walk around the plant to make sure people don't make a left, they only make a right?
Lance, if you can answer that?
Dedicated.
Yes.
Okay. In the traffic study, I know about the 60 trucks, we have that down, but did you take into consideration what Route 33 looks like? Single road, lots of flooding, no sewers, and no lights from going east? The last light is eight miles beyond before it gets to Yellowbrook Road.
Gary, do you wanna?
I'm aware of the condition of Route 33, and that was taken into consideration in our study? Yes.
Okay. I drive it every day, it's an interesting place. In early testimony, early testimony, which you gave, which was kind of educational about asphalt plants, it raised a lot of environmental concerns. Someone mentioned that drivers traditionally use gasoline to remove asphalt that has coated some of their trucks.
It's diesel, sir.
Okay, diesel.
Thank you.
Coats their trucks. You mentioned that you used some sort of a chemical, which I believe you said you developed or you use. Since any plant could be an environmental disaster, which is the biggest worry we at Equestra have.
Sir, the question.
I got my question, without proper controls and a strict compliance, my two questions are: one, has the EPA approved your substitute for cleaning diesel off a truck?
If you know the answer to that question, Lance.
I don't know the answer, but...
Can I rephrase that question for you? It's not removing diesel off the truck, and it's not removing anything off the truck. No. What the process is, is they put either a soap or a soap-based product, or a lot of them use diesel, they spray in the beds of the truck to keep the asphalt from sticking to the bed of the truck. That's the process.
And the worry would be having that on the ground. Well...
There's a substitute for it.
Okay, I'll let you answer that question based on the engineering and the...
If you know the answer to the question being asked, whether the spray-down material, I think it was the spray-down station that was proposed to provide contractors coming in, or your own trucks to come in and spray, spray down, I think I'm using the correct word, spray down for free, so that it wasn't done on other properties?
We are going to give the trucks an option to spray their bodies down with a natural product.
Okay, but we're not sure if that's been EPA-approved. And the second question is, do you have a written compliance policy and a staff dedicated to enforcing those policies?
I think that's already been asked, but Lance, if you could...
Lance, to answer that, please.
We don't have it in place right now because we haven't been approved yet, but yes, there will be, and yes, it will be policed by the other owner, my brother Larry, and Sandy McIntyre, and myself, who will be on that property, peak, every day.
But you're management, I'm just asking if there's staff that enforces whatever power that you put in, dedicated?
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
By the way, those were very excellent questions, thank you.
Nick Accisano, 92, Salem Hill Road, Howell. A-C-C-I-S-A-N-O. I just have a couple of quick questions on the site. You say you've got the 13 acres that you're going to convert over to this new pristine ground, and right now it's an impervious material that's on there? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
All right, if the material's impervious, is it in any shape right now that you could actually use it, or do you have to remove it because it's no longer solid or stable?
It could be reused.
All right, so it is capable of being reused. All right, if we're going to remove this material, which is going to be impervious, which means whatever fluids, liquids, materials could possibly flow through it are blocked, and you put in, in place of it, pristine ground that is not impervious, what happens to the runoff in that case?
I testified to the stormwater management, and especially to the board requested in certain areas that we use a concrete pad, and the board also requested that we capture runoff from the area where the trucks are proposed to queue and to stand in that parking area, and we've agreed to do that. We looked to a non-structural approach for stormwater management, including total suspended solid removal, which is the requirement of the state. We meet the state requirements for total suspended solid removal due to a non-structural approach. We are capturing runoff in areas that are likely to have a pollutant load. We're discharging them over a landscaped and lawn meadow mix area that I testified to, and that is the standard of practice in New Jersey, to actually reduce the impervious surfaces on the road. If we left it there, if we left that 13 acres of impervious surface there, the water would simply runoff into Yellowbrook Road. What we're doing is providing the birmingham, the landscaping, and this meadow mix material to actually filter the water, and to allow us to capture water and filter water before it discharges into the drainage system on Yellowbrook Road. That is a better alternative, that's consistent with the state standards and the best management practices.
All right, thank you. And with regard to the vehicles, these are all diesel-powered, which means they have diesel exhaust. Is there any consideration to the materials that are exhausted from those vehicles on this, or this now would be impervious ground? The oils and soot and everything else that's associated with diesel?
Well, that's not, exhaust is really not part of the stormwater management plan, because that's airborne pollutants.
Land somewhere.
And I, and I testified as to the, the onsite pollutants, how we intend to capture and filter it. I, I didn't study anything with regard to exhaust. That was an environmental scientist that did that study. I, I believe may have done that study.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I have one last question for the chairman.
Yes, sir.
Do you honestly think it's a waste of time to hear the public's questions?
No, sir. It's not a waste of time, but you see the public here going over and over same questions that's already been asked and answered. That is a waste of time.
I would agree.
And it, it, as far as the public, that's why I ask. If you, I, I want to hear every question you have, as long as it's not the same question or we're dealing over and over a question a different way. You know, that's what I'm trying to cut because there's a lot of people here, and I would love everybody here that has a question to be able to ask and answer because some, I, I, I would think that most people would have a question that would, that they have that hasn't been asked. I would like those people to be able to ask those questions, but if we keep going over the same questions over and over, it's really not fair to the rest of the people that want to ask a question.
All right, well, thank you.
That's, that's where it is, but yes, it's important for, that, that's why we had this meeting tonight.
Well, this is why we're looking to you to protect our environment. That's why we come.
That's why we need the questions. That's why we rely on our professionals. That's why, you know, they put an application into us. We have to take what their professionals state, what our professionals advise us, and then also the concerns from the, the, the public. We need to know those, and then, then we've got to come to the best decision that we can come up with. That, that's why we're having the, these meetings.
That's understandable. I mean, it's important to get ratables.
Hey, we don't even look at ratables. We can't even look.
Right. I mean, now, I don't want to run into, to comments. I mean, that goes against the, what was just being explained by the chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I certainly would have some comments right now, but I'll withhold them.
Thank you, sir.
Gary Barnett, 12 West Da Vinci Avenue in Farmingdale. In the process of manufacturing asphalt, what toxic fumes, chemical substances or vapors are likely to enter the atmosphere?
And that, that, that testimony has been provided across and public ask questions.
I, I understand, but I, I, let Lance just answer that question, if he, if you can. I, I know it's been testified by Aztec Plant, but, you know.
Can you ask a question again?
In the process of manufacturing asphalt, what toxic substances, vapors, may be admitted into the atmosphere? And are they toxic, and in what quantities do you anticipate?
I, I, I'm going to defer to, to my professional from Aztec that, that answered those questions, but, but as far, as far as I know, I, I, I'm not aware of anything toxic.
What was the testimony that was given by the company that you cited?
I, I, sir, now, now, I, I was asking Lance, but it has been testified to, and there was specs, specs on the plant itself that dealt with the filter systems and every, you know, every question that you're asking right there, that plant has a spec sheet too. And you're, you're welcome to, to go to the open records with, with Eileen and pull the testimony up from that, or you can go on to Howell Web TV and listen to that testimony from her. But she did address every question that you're asking right there as far as toxicity.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. Steven Scopetulo, S C O P E T T U O L O, 24 East Scrumold. Okay. Earlier, I, I heard testimony, and I just had a quick, quick question regarding the, the purchase of the land and the site and everything else. At the time that the site was purchased, were you aware that a variance would be needed for, for that facility?
And once again, I mean.
Mr. Tropoli, I, I'm going to let Mr., there's a legal ramification to that.
I can only say that they're here for a used variance.
Right.
And, and that is basically the law of the case, whether he knew it or not, he's here now. I, I don't think it's a relevant question. I understand what you're saying, but if you can just address there, the questions that they've testified to, and he did not testify about any knowledge of variances at the time.
Okay. And I know there's a lot of talking questions about trucks, and I'm not, I'm not sure how the study's done and what that actually means, but my assumption is when I hear this, 60 trucks, my assumption is that it's okay. You know, that, that it's within some, some standard, that those 60 trucks in nighttime and whatever we're saying, that it's, it's acceptable to, to, to the conditions, right? So what I don't under, what I don't understand, don't know is, in the study, was there maximum number of trucks that were set to say 60 is good, nighttime 128 is good, but if you get to 400, or if you get to 212, then, then the study said that's too many? That's what I was looking for. What's the max in terms of, of trucks?
Mr. Dean, if you want to explain how you prepared your study and the findings of that study?
I'll, I'll do my best. We, we assume that 20% of the trucks would actually arrive and depart in one hour. So we believe we were conservative, and I, and I should point out that when our traffic study was originally done, it also included trucks as part of a recycling operation. That is, that is no longer part of the application. So our forecasts of trucks, where we're actually, in terms of the math, we were assuming 18 an hour, which is almost a third of all of the daily truck activity occurring in one hour. So that's why I'm very confident that if the 60 is in fact a little bit higher, that we're well within our assumptions that, that this is not a traffic problem in terms of operations.
Okay. So my, my question really doesn't pertain necessarily to the trucks leaving there, but the study itself, the study eventually says they're going to put 60 an hour, 18 an hour, so many a day, great. Does the study say if they were to do some level, then that's too many?
No.
Was there a cap on understanding what too many would be one day?
We, we, we don't prepare studies on that kind of scenario. It's, it's contrary to the testimony by the applicant, so I, I don't study something that's not part of the record.
So you just study where he says, this will be my operation, and you, you check that out and then say that, then that would be okay?
And, and I don't know if you were here, I also contrasted it with, we, we counted Stavola's operation, and the numbers aren't comparable. We're, we're not at variance with what we see generated by an asphalt plant right down the street.
I don't, I don't know what that means. I'm just looking for, does anyone know how many trucks are too many eventually? Because if I'm sitting in his chair, my goal would be to make a lot of money. I want to, I want to develop my plant, and if I do, someone else has to put, someone has to put a cap on it, right?
Getting into comments.
Fine. You don't know what the maximum number of trucks per day would, would, before traffic is impeded, right? Don't know. And, and. That's all.
I'm getting to that standard in your opinion of what do you mean by traffic is impeded?
I don't know. What, what do you mean by we did the study and 60 trucks are good?
I can't answer your question because you don't know, and I certainly don't know what impeded means from, from a traffic perspective, so.
You say 60 trucks going through there a day, or 18 in, in, in an hour is acceptable? Is that the word you would use in your study?
Yes, at very favorable.
Very favorable.
Service levels coming in and out of the plant.
Service level acceptable, so in, with those words then, in your estimation, if we had 300 trucks a day going in there, would that be, be acceptable for the commuters on 33?
Well, that's a different question. Some may say one more truck is, is unacceptable, others may not even notice the difference of 300 trucks per day. There's no, I, there's no. Right. There's no objective measure for that.
Okay. And the other question was, you know, I, I look at 33, you know, 330, the, the other day I looked, and there was, I don't know, 50 or 60 cars lined up, right? So is there, I, I know I heard something about a traffic light, we could, something like we could do a traffic light, or if we need a traffic light, but in the study, does it, did it say a traffic light would be necessary when the operation is up and running, we would need a traffic light there?
No, we determined that a traffic light is needed today, forgetting about this application. There's enough traffic on Yellow Brook and Route 33 to justify putting in a traffic signal today.
Okay. And you, and that's based on the amount of traffic on Yellow Brook Road?
And on Route 33, correct.
Okay, I, I, my thoughts were, were different. And then when you did the study for the trucks, did you consider anything about the number of cars on 33? Is that, is that part of the study? Cars plus the trucks?
Correct. It's all traffic.
All traffic. And then when you considered the cars, did you, you considered the amount of cars that go on 33 today at, at, at this level, based on the addition of these trucks? Is that how you did, or did you increase the level of cars based on something?
We, we assumed that traffic will increase over time as there are other businesses or, you know, new homes, people, people that occupy, so traffic does tend to historically increase.
And what's that, what's that level that, that you would have put onto that? 2% increase?
Yeah, I think that's about correct.
Okay. So the development on 33 that's being put, the, the, the other senior development that's going up, and we're going to have another 250 homes or whatever that is.
We're getting the comments here.
Question, did you consider the increase in traffic that comes from the new development down the road as well?
Yes.
And how many addition, what, what was that percentage then when you considered that?
I didn't calculate their individual percentage. We just added the traffic that was forecast in that traffic study. I don't know what the percentage is.
Thank you.
Les Spindel, S P I N D E L, 46 West Da Vinci Way, Equestra Farmingdale, Howell. Question for the noise and traffic studies. What's the justification for doing an analysis based on a hypothetical business plan which may be correct, or it may be low, or it may be high, and rather than doing a worst-case study on what the potential could be, given the capacity of the plant, since we don't know what the, the actual business level is going to be?
But we, we believe that there is one person in this room that knows what the actual business level will be, and that's the person investing in this application. It's, it's his site. He best knows, I think, more than anybody in the room.
Okay. So the guy that started Apple knew what that was going to be, the guy that started Amazon, Jeff Bezos.
Sir, we're getting any comments. Just a question, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. Bob Good, Seven Tall Oaks Court, Farmingdale, which is basically North Howell. Okay. Has it been stated what type of plant you intend to build?
Yes.
Yes.
And the answer would have been?
Aztec.
The, the manufacturer is, is going to be Aztec?
Yes, but what type of plant would it be? Would it be a drum plant? Would it be a batch plant?
That testimony has been, has been provided to by Catherine. I believe it's a, it's a drum plant. I'm not an expert on it. You can look back at the testimony that was provided by, by the representative.
You should know what types of plants.
I'm not a representative, I'm a lawyer. I'm not, I don't, I don't make asphalt.
All right. And the, what would be the definition of a drum plant? Does anybody know?
That's been testified to. What, what I would, what I would refer you to is to see on a, open records and, and get all the information on that, this plant. It's all been testified to.
A drum plant by definition is a continuously operating plant.
Sir.
As opposed to a batch plant.
Sir, we're, do you have a question?
Okay. One, one more thing. The hours of operation were originally stated as seven in the morning till 10 at night? Is that correct? Was that the original from what I heard last week?
It, it, it's been testified to, but I, I'll, that, that's not correct, but Lance, you want to answer that?
Lance, if you could just maybe give the hours of operation.
Seven to five.
Okay. So you were going to have approximately three silos to be built originally?
Yes.
All right. Some drum plants basically can produce 600 tons per hour.
Sir, we're, we're getting into the tonnage again. I, I don't even want to go there.
Okay. Where do you anticipate your oil to come from? Which refineries? If you do succeed in building a plant?
If you know the answer to that question.
I do not know.
Okay. I can make some comments, but.
Yeah, we'll hold those.
All right. Question, your trucks are directed out of your plant left onto Yellow Brook Road?
Yes.
Okay. As, early as approximately two weeks ago, you have, you have a, how many dump trucks, may I ask? New, new dump trucks? Approximately?
20.
Okay. Would there be a reason to explain why maybe two weeks ago I noticed three of them coming through the town of Farmingdale between the railroad tracks and Belmar Boulevard when they're directed to be on Yellow Brook Road going out to 33?
Once again, I mean, that wasn't, that, there's no testimony in the record. That was, that would be a base for this question.
All right, they're already off route.
I don't, I don't know.
Sir, I, I think the testimony that they would be directed left or right off, on Yellow Brook Road. I, to my best recollection of the testimony, they would be directed left or right on Yellow Brook Road.
All right. Do you know how many bridges are on Cranberry Road from your plant to Asbury Avenue?
I do not.
Okay. There are three bridges. Cranberry Road is not actually marked as a lightweight road.
Okay. Just a question based on the testimony that was provided.
Where do you wash your trucks?
On our property right now.
Okay. You wash them on your property. Whereabouts are they washed? Are they washed indoors or are they washed outdoors?
Both.
Both. Okay. I believe New Jersey state law requires a retention berm built around a wash area for any trucks.
That's a fair question.
Is that correct?
If you know the answer to that question.
I do not know that answer.
So apparently you do not have any berms built around your wash-off areas for your trucks?
If you know the answer to that question.
I, I don't know that answer.
Okay, that would be in violation in my, in my.
Okay. No comments, please.
Sorry. Why did you not remain at your business location on Shafto Road?
Sir.
Sir, it's not a relevant question. If we could just stick to this application, sir, respectfully, thank you.
All right, at a later date I will have comments on a lot of these things.
Okay, sir.
Which I think are pertinent, but for right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I swear to tell the truth. Yes, and your name and your address. My name is Richino Cerino, N-O-C-E-R-I-N-O. N-O-C-E-R-I-N-O, 100 East Bosworth Boulevard, Farmingdale, New Jersey, Equestria resident. I have a question for Mr. Nansen, please. I have a question for Mr. Nansen, please.
He's not a witness, sir, respectfully. You'd have to direct it to the witnesses here.
He had made a comment before about it was above his pay scale or the board's pay scale.
He's the chairman, sir. Please direct your questions to the witnesses in front of you, thank you.
Okay, this is for the traffic. Did I hear you say earlier today that you were not on Cranberry Road or Yellowbrook Road yourself?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, so you were there for the testing?
No, I was not there for the testing.
Okay. Any consideration with the egress onto Route 33 left or right for a 56,000 Mack truck loaded?
They're using that today, so we always have a concern about that, which is what has led to the request by the borough and, excuse me, the board engineer to evaluate the need for a traffic signal.
Okay, so I respect that you, you know, recommended that, which is, you know, something that will be good if anything comes out of this at all. My question is, is do you know about the average speed of a regular vehicle to make, to get to 50 miles an hour from a dead stop on a highway?
I don't understand the question.
How many seconds would it take to go from zero to 50 roughly on an average vehicle, average car?
Zero to 50? Usually it's zero to 60, and it's somewhere around six, six and a half, seven seconds.
Okay, same question, would a 56,000 Mack truck loaded?
It's going to be longer, I can't tell you the exact time.
You don't know?
No, I don't.
Over 30 seconds roughly. Have you been behind a Mack truck trying to make a left onto Route 33 West or witnessed that during your test?
Yes.
And how long did it take?
It took a long time. We're aware of the current condition at 33 and Yellowbrook.
Okay. Have you witnessed or had, whoever worked for your company witnessed, when a truck pulls on through 33 going west, okay, that they ride the shoulder of the lane to get up to the speed limit of 50 to 55 miles an hour? Have you witnessed that?
No, that we didn't.
You did not take note of that?
We noticed the delays, we noticed the gap, meaning how long trucks wait to turn left. Whether they turn left or right, they still need to get up to travel speed, so...
Obviously, but it's much harder to make a left. And if you've been in a vehicle being on site or driving on site, you would see that trying to make a left because the sight line is not that strong to begin with and is an issue. Again, thank you for your recommendation for a light, okay? But my point is that when you go, and you'll have 50 or 60 trucks, as stated in the report, and as Lance has stated, okay, and they start backing up one another, okay, how long is it going to take for people to make a left on there safely?
It depends on what the board's disposition of the application is and whether that includes funding toward a traffic signal.
Okay.
Because obviously a signal changes how that entire intersection operates. So we know that trucks use it today, that this is a manufacturing zone. So whether it's this use or another manufacturing use, we would expect trucks to be generated by something on this site, and that condition is endemic to Route 33 and Yellowbrook.
You mentioned that you did take into consideration about the new housing that's going to be built on 33 East past the traffic light by the Quick Check. You had mentioned earlier tonight, you took that into consideration. Did you take into consideration the propositions of 15A and 15B that are going to be housing, that are going to be built on Yellowbrook Road, that is still proposed? It's not, and I don't know if it's 100% approved yet, but there's supposed to be roughly another 600 homes.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, and if it hasn't been approved, it's incumbent upon that applicant to address their traffic impacts in the same way that this applicant has retained me to evaluate his.
Can I address that? Excuse me, can I address that?
Sure.
Those are not going to happen. I can tell you that right now. They're not going to happen.
Well, I was going to ask you that, I wasn't allowed to.
They're not going to... Those aren't going to happen. But let me ask the traffic real quick, and it might eliminate some of your questions also. Whenever you put in a light, are you going to do the unnecessary exchanges like left turn lanes, right turn lanes? It's going to all be part of that? Traffic light, correct?
That would be part of the evaluation. I think step one is obviously address the current need, which has safety and congestion attributes, and putting the light in addresses that. As we get into other design phases and building it out for the future, that gets a little far afield of what I can predict here, but that would be part of that design effort, correct?
Question, I know that when the Quick Check was built, they put money into the light and the traffic light. Is this something that you're going to be doing at your company to assist in this?
I believe that there already was testimony provided that if there is a light that is put there, my client would provide the requisite amount to contribute to that light.
Okay, do we... I know the county handles this and it's above the board here. Do we know anything of where that we are in that request? Or has there been a request made?
First, it's NJDOT, not the county.
Okay, well, I'm just going by what the chairman had said, that it was the county.
No, not...
That was regarding something else. That wasn't regarding the traffic light.
Okay, well, I apologize for that, but I... So could you explain to us how that works then?
It's sequential. If there's a favorable consideration of this application and the board feels it's appropriate to seek a contribution for that signal, that will be part of their deliberation. So it doesn't happen... It could happen regardless of the outcome of this application, but it hasn't.
So when you say the board, do you mean this board?
Yes, correct.
This board would have to make the application in the head?
No, no. No, no, no. Can you just explain how a traffic light determination is made by the state of New Jersey?
Sure. A study is prepared, it's called a warrant study, and it evaluates the volume and how well it or poorly it operates, and whether it meets sufficient standards to justify the light.
It's a number, right, like a 78 or...
Yeah, it's more than that. But we've done that, and I've testified to it, and we've presented it to this board. So we've determined that the light is needed today. Has nothing to do with this applicant.
Right, understandable.
So as part of this application, however, there's at least an opportunity to begin that process. And so the town is actually the applicant for the signal to DOT, because the applicant doesn't own Yellowbrook Road.
Right.
The municipality does.
Okay.
So they actually are the applicant to DOT, the petitioner to request the signal. But we've provided now the board and the town engineer with the study that can be submitted to DOT to basically say to DOT, "Look, it's warranted. Please approve it."
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Mazur, M-A-Z-U-R, 176 West Renaissance Boulevard, Farmingdale, Howell, Equestria resident. I'm hoping that's a permissible question, but there's a sign on your property and it's been there for quite some time. And there are four names on the sign, ARE, Fabco, Fabcor, L&amp;L Paving. My question is, what are the current relationships you have with those companies and the type of business they perform?
We own all of those companies. ARE is a restoration, paving restoration company. Fabco and Fabcor is our remediation company. And L&amp;L Paving is our paving company.
Okay. Now, you stated that there are no trucks would be allowed on Cranberry Road, but yet there are several asphalt-type companies there. Esso, Nifler, Henckels &amp; McCoy.
Yes, sir, but that has nothing to do with this application.
But it does.
No, it doesn't, sir. I'm sorry, it doesn't. Those are existing companies, they're there.
Are they existing customers, then? Let me ask you a question. Are they existing customers?
Okay, that's a fair enough question.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Is Esso or Esso, I'm not sure I'm saying it correctly, Nifler, Henckels &amp; McCoy, are they current customers of yours?
No.
If they came to you and wanted to buy product from you, would you sell them product?
Yes.
Okay. Then how could you enforce the no trucks on Cranberry Road law or rule?
No, I believe that the testimony that was provided prior by Lance was that if, as long as it's not a job that's being done, so if there's a job being done on Cranberry Road, obviously, then if someone's buying pavement or asphalt, betonized concrete from L&amp;L Paving, they would go and do that job on Cranberry Road. But if there's not a job on Cranberry Road, what the prohibition is going to be is you come, the contractor or L&amp;L's trucks come out of the site, they make a left or a right in this day on Yellowbrook Road, they don't go down Cranberry Road.
Okay, but these trucks originate from Cranberry Road?
Once again, that is, if there's a job on Cranberry Road, so then it makes, obviously, that would be counterintuitive, that they couldn't travel on Cranberry Road if there's a job on Cranberry Road.
Okay, that's fair enough. Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're going to take one more question and then we're going to wrap it up for tonight. We will continue. Come forth.
Bob Reinert, 52 West Aviciway, Farmingdale.
Can you speak into the mic, please? Right there.
Bob Reinert, 52 West Aviciway, Farmingdale, Equestria, R-E-I-N-E-R-T.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I've been at most of these meetings, so I know everything's getting very redundant. But I had a question specifically for the noise expert, okay? I know you did a study where 65 decibels is the maximum allowance during a day, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your study was, I think, 900 feet from the plant is the furthest you went?
Yes, those were the two homes on Cranberry Road.
Okay, very... It was kind of not glossed over, but it was overlooked, I thought. Someone asked you about changes in noise given different atmospheric conditions, and you said, "Yes, this can change it." But what I want to know, if there's any studies that you know of that will tell me how far 65 decibels will go? I mean, will it go a quarter mile? Will it go a half a mile? I mean, there are days in Equestria where you think it's D-Day is happening. And we have military, you know, with, it might be Omaha Beach with some of the noise that we got between the guns and what kind of equipment we have. So my question is, do you know of any studies that will tell me how far 65 decibels will go? Will it take 50 mile an hour winds? Will it take... What will it do?
I don't know of any studies like that. I do know that there are numerous facilities that are much closer to Equestria than L&amp;L that have a lot of heavy equipment operating on site.
Yeah, we hear it. Okay, I mean, that's it, so you don't, you can't really give me an answer.
The, from a point source, the, per doubling of distance, the, there's a six-decibel drop. So if it were 60 decibels at 900 feet, then it would be 54 decibels at 1,800 feet.
Okay. Is there, there's conditions under which that might change, though? Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, again, there's certain winds blow a certain way, things, we hear things much more prevalent than other days where it's going the other way.
I understand. When you get over a couple thousand feet away, it's very difficult to be exact about how far that noise travels because the atmospheric conditions are so variable.
Okay. Ms. Cofone, the planner, isn't here, is she?
No, she hasn't been cross-examined at this time, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This will continue at another night.
Are we gonna... I'd like to see, were we finished with asking questions of these witnesses?
I do... Can I see any hands, show your hands?
Who hasn't had a chance to ask a question?
How many more that have other questions? What you got? No, I don't think so. So...
If...
Yeah.
If possible, I would ask that we can maybe finish the people who have questions in the public right now.
Do you want to? We're going to have to take five minutes, so...
You know, Mr. Chair, given, right, given the time of the evening, look, I can't disagree with Mr. Butler. I know these folks have waited for a long time.
Yeah, I know.
But again, I would just ask that people limit their questions, and I mean, and a lot of them are good questions, but a lot of them are redundant.
Yes, I agree.
And I saw about, what, about 10 hands back there?
Okay.
If you're bored, if the board is willing to do it, maybe we can wrap it all up in a half hour. Not trying to curtail it, but maybe if people just ask precise questions, we can get it done, and then we can proceed next week with Ms. Cofone with, you know, objecting attorney representing, cross-examining.
Okay, that's good with the board, but we got to take five.
We've got to take five. Zoning Board will now reconvene.
Okay, next question. You've already questioned.
I have a different question.
Give somebody else a turn.
Someone else, please.
Let's let somebody else come up, please. Give your question to one or the other person. That one.
Chairman's been down the stairs before.
Thank you.
I do.
Mike Quigley, that's with a Q, 4 East White Cliff Way, at Equestria in Farmingdale.
Let me ask you a question.
My questions are basically about environment issues.
Okay.
First of all, I don't know if any of this was discussed already at previous council meetings, but has L&amp;L Paving have any environmental actions pending?
That's not what was testified to. We're testifying about the application, that's before the board.
Correct. Keep it to this application.
All right. Second question is relative to the traffic light. Should the traffic light be approved, who foots the bill for it? The installation, the striping of the left-hand turn going west on Route 33?
As was testified to. If there is a traffic light put into that, into that intersection, my client would gladly contribute whatever portion is required for that installation.
Does that mean 100% contribution?
Does that mean 100% contribution? No, that does not mean 100% contribution. It's whatever the calculation is at the time when that light is put in. I don't know what that calculation would be.
So the balance would be paid by the taxpayers?
It, I guess, in general, I'm assuming, I don't know that. There could be another development that comes in where there could be another contribution. I don't know. All I can tell you is that my client will gladly make the contribution that they're required to make.
Relative to, I'm not going to go over numbers or anything as far as the truck traffic, does that number that was discussed include tanker trucks carrying petroleum and hazardous materials?
I don't know what your definition of a tanker truck is.
The truck that would carry the petroleum to make, it's one of the major components in the manufacture of asphalt.
Mr. Dean, if you don't answer that question?
Yes, it includes all trucks.
That's included in the 60 trucks a day?
Correct.
I'd like to give a question to Lance if he can answer it. How much petroleum would be required?
How much petroleum would be required for you to keep your production standards at 200,000 tons?
That's annual, correct? Annual, correct, is your question?
Yes.
If you can answer that question.
Well, let's, let's change it to daily. I mean, you know what your daily production target is. I'm just wondering how much petroleum you're going to have to need in order to manufacture the asphalt.
Petroleum, the facility runs on natural gas. Are you talking about the asphalt cement?
Whatever asphalt has, it's got petroleum in it, correct?
It has asphalt cement in it. And that is going to be between one tanker to two tankers per day.
And are they obligated to follow the rules on your prescribed routes? Okay, I have no more questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I've got to follow up with Lance real quick. Lance, are you anticipating on purchasing your own tanker to haul your own material?
Mr. Chairman, we are prepared to buy our own tanker when it's necessary.
Okay. Fair answer. The only reason I was asking that question, that gives you control over, correct, the product.
Yes.
Tony Anzono, A-N-Z-A-N-O, 283 Cranberry Road, Farmingdale. The property that we've been speaking of, the physical address is 89 Yellowbrook? I'm sorry, the property in question, the address is 89 Yellowbrook?
Yes.
Can you tell me if that property lies within an area that's deemed environmentally sensitive?
Deemed by whom?
By the state.
Brooke, if you know the answer?
I don't believe it does.
As I said earlier, I live on Cranberry Road, which is obviously adjacent to the area we're speaking of. And I know for a fact that Cranberry Road is deemed as an environmentally sensitive area. Reason being is we don't have sewers running down the street, and they won't put them in anytime soon for that very reason.
I don't know why the sewers aren't put into Cranberry Road. There was no testimony.
No, it's irrelevant. What I'm saying is, I live in an area that's adjacent to-
We could put that in the form of a question, sir, but it sounds like a comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just want to try to-
Okay.
Okay, can it be identified if that area is in fact located within an environmentally sensitive zone?
From an environmental point of view, there is nothing environmentally sensitive there. The wetlands have a 50-foot buffer. They do not have a 100-foot buffer, so that they are not exceptional value. Wetlands, I personally did not look at the state planning designation for the area. Perhaps that's what you are referring to, and that's more of a planning designation that has to do with sewer service areas and, and things like that. But I have been on site at seven or eight times and been all over the site and can certainly say that there is nothing environmentally sensitive on the site.
Okay. Can you tell me what, what'll happen to the wastewater from this particular facility?
Sir, it's already been testified to.
It's already been testified to.
It's been testified to?
Tonight.
Correct.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Just one last question. I know there have been expert witnesses for traffic, noise, and for site planning. Has there any consideration, has there been any consideration as to what happens to property values when a facility of this nature-
We can't look at that.
Who does?
That's, that's, this is SED piece of property. This is already-
I'm sorry.
This is already a commercial piece of property.
Okay.
You know, it's already zoned that way. We're here because they want to put an asphalt plant.
Right. But I understand that Howell has already passed some sort of-
All right, there's not a, there's not a question here.
Has Howell passed a legislation prohibiting-
Once again, that's not something that was, that was testified to. We're here because there's, we're here, excuse me.
Hang on a second. I think I can address that as the board attorney. They're here for a use variance because the use is not permitted in the area. The board cannot take notice of what is of a better or worse economic value for Howell. That's no place in the MLUL, and that's what guides their decision-making. But the purpose of their being here is a use variance.
Okay, so currently-
Use is not permitted in the zone.
Currently, Howell prohibits this type of manufacture within the township limits?
That's why we're here for, that's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
That's the board that decides use variance.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next. Anyone else? Come on, come forward. Oh, again. Okay, this is the last one. He can come at the end.
Okay, sir, I'm going to remind you, you're under oath. Just state your name again.
Nick Acasano, 92 Salem Hill Road. This is addressed to the traffic again. Now, it was stated that you're anticipating-
Can you speak into the mic, please?
You're anticipating about 18 trucks an hour? Was that the number that was issued tonight?
Correct, in one hour, correct.
All right, in one hour. Now, these trucks are going to go down Cranberry to 33.
No, that's incorrect.
That's incorrect. They're not going down Cranberry.
I'm sorry, they're going down Yellowbrook.
Some are. Some can go south of 524.
All right, so you're going to have 18 trucks an hour. By simple math, that means a truck every three and a half minutes or every three and a third minutes. If we put a light in, in an area that's already congested, and we now add a truck every three and a third minutes or some fraction thereof, is a light going to mitigate that? Or are they going to stack up and there's going to be a series of trucks trying to egress onto 33?
Correct. That's a fair question. One, it's premise that every truck would want to go to Route 33.
And there's no guarantee that they won't.
But there's no rationale that they would. Second point is, the lights are programmed generally at a T-intersection, which Yellowbrook Road would be, at a 90-second cycle, which means the light changes every minute and a half. So that means there would be less than half a truck showing up every time the light changes. So there won't be a line of trucks backed up because it would be every other cycle.
Right, and that would be true if there wasn't any additional traffic. Now, these trucks do not accelerate, as we've already stated tonight, as quickly as a car would. So you're going to have a series of vehicles that potentially could-
Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah. I think I've stated it already. Isn't this going to, is a traffic light going to actually mitigate the amount of additional traffic on a road that's already congested?
And the answer is yes.
All right, that's your professional opinion.
Correct.
That's all I have. Thank you, sir. And I'll keep my comments to myself.
Okay. Okay, I want to ask one more time. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Orozco. Second? Second. Second by Mr. Merton. So all in favor? All opposed? Okay, thank you. We will be back on the 17th, correct?
That's right.
Correct. Well, the plan at the moment is for Ms. Capone to be cross-examined.
I just want to put on the record that, Mr. Chair, I believe that, you know, the public is closed with respect to questions on these four witnesses tonight.
Correct.
So that they're not required to come back next week.
The only thing, the only time that it would have to be reopened if there was further testimony put on the record by any one of these witnesses.
No, I understand that. But I just wanted to let the public know as far as the public portion is, for these four witnesses only, they'll have an opportunity to cross-examine Ms. Capone as well.
Correct. This is correct.
Possibly, hopefully, next week. But that's what we plan on. So, thank you.
Now, you, public, you understand Ms. Capone is the applicant's planner. She will be here next week. We hope to get her cross-examination done, then we will open her to public questions at that time.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Comments are after, the opposing attorney will probably put his witnesses on. Then they'll be cross-examined. Then you'll have the opportunity to ask them questions. And then we'll open the comments at the conclusion of the hearings. Please, we haven't adjourned. We're still in session. Case number BA1806, L&amp;L Paving will be carried with no further notice to Sept- September, no, December, December 17th with no further notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board for your patience tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other business of the board?
Yeah, it's ended December.
Professionals, any other business? None. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Amara, second by Mr. Orozco. All in favor? Zoning Board adjourns 11:58.
10:58.
10:58. I'm messed up. I'm done.